Item twenty is a joint report regarding the RJT and Magna Solar Fit project updates. And the word proposed contained in the recommendation four is to be deleted. If you could make that change on your agenda, or on your agenda, please. Item twenty-one A-
Sorry, Bob, where was that?
That is an item twenty, it's a recommendation for, the word proposed should be deleted. Shall I continue then?
Can you, please do.
Okay, item twenty-one A is a summary of public comments received regarding the application for zoning bylaw amendment by Green and Rose Developments Inc. for two twelve Davis Drive, which is the seven P. M. public hearing. Item twenty-one B being corporate services, legal services, report regarding tools to support rental housing, the pilot project at two twelve Davis Drive. This was identified on the agenda to take place in the evening, but it is to be dealt with in the afternoon session, and the applicant has been advised of that. Item twenty-two is a community services recreation and culture report regarding municipal asset naming program and is in addition to the regular agenda, as is item twenty-three being the list of outstanding matters which we usually include on the agenda, and it was not included inadvertently. Then in addition, on Thursday, we have provided the closed session agenda for you as well, which consists of four items. Development and infrastructure services, planning and building services, closed session report is also included on that. And then addendum two, which is before you today, has item sixteen A being withdrawn. That is one that deals with a staff request for early budget approval. We felt that out of an abundance of caution, that should be referred to the new council to come in at the very first opportunity to take advantage of early tendering and so on. And item three A is identified in the closed session agenda, verbal report from the CIO regarding proposed acquisition of land in Ward Seven. That's withdrawn at this time and will be the subject of either confidential memo or a, an information report. And then, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to introduce our new commissioner at this time. We have a new commissioner of development and infrastructure services, Peter Nohammer. Peter joined us at the beginning of August, replacing our longtime commissioner, Rob Prentice. Peter comes to us from the city of Toronto, where he was the district, or the director of transportation services in the Scarborough District. And Peter has a wealth of both public and private experience that he'll bring to the municipality, and I wanted to welcome him into the chambers and also to our town staff team. Welcome, Peter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Questions, Councilor Sponga?
On item thirty, the addendum, just one clarification, this was supposed, this was going to be dealt with this evening as-
Thirty?
Oh, sorry. I'm going to have to refer to my addendum number one, which, so it's the report twenty-fourteen dash twenty-two.
Yes, that's the public hearing? Twenty-one B?
No.
No?
I have it in my, it's tools to support rental housing. It's in title?
Yep.
Was that the item you're referring that was supposed to be dealt with this evening? It's going to be dealt with this afternoon?
This afternoon.
Okay. How is it going to be dealt with this evening? Procedure, I'm just asking.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the reason it is on the afternoon agenda, it is, it's dealing with the concepts in terms of the, in particular, the discussions on the D. C. deferral agreement. And it would be put before council for approval or discussion at this time, or both. And it is, however, fully dependent on going through the planning process if we do get to the stage of seeing a site plan agreement associated with that.
I'm sorry, Bob, maybe I didn't myself, I didn't make myself clear. Were we going to deal with it under committee of the whole and council this evening?
I believe the intent is that this item be ratified following committee of the whole.
Today, this afternoon?
Because of the timeline.
Instead of this evening.
I think that that would be appropriate, Mr. Mayor. If you could do that, I think it could also go to the next council meeting. But what we need to do is to be able to continue discussions with the proponent on the proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
Just a question on that. We are going ahead with the meeting tonight at seven.
Oh, yes.
It's a public meeting, okay. I want to make that clear.
The item that's being referenced is the, is the pilot project, the components of the tools for intensification, and that requires ratification. Okay? Good. All right, what I'll do then is I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order. You've received an overview of the additions and the corrections to the agenda. Could I have a motion, please, to-
[inaudible]
Counselor Kirwin, seconded by Counselor Twenty. All those in favor? Thank you. Having determined the items on the agenda, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Counselor Vega?
Thank you very much. In our closed session agenda, item number four does refer to, I'm not sure how much I can talk about, but Habitat for Humanity. And since I am an employee of Habitat for Humanity, I will not participate.
Thank you. Counselor Sponga?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to see Chris' hands help here in a second, because I think I'm going on my electronic agenda and perhaps around number the same. But I will be declaring a pecuniary conflict with the Heritage Minute item, that it's in the addendum number one, as our home is designated on the Interior Heritage Act. It's by law two thousand and seven dash thirty-four.
So we'll deal with those items separately?
Please.
Okay. Also, in the interest of transparency, I want to point out that I am a member of the South Lake Regional Health Center Board, having been appointed to the position by the regional municipality of York. And although I have no potential personal financial gain or loss that could come out of the matter that is before council as a director, as a director, I could be said to have had an indirect pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. However, I have received legal advice, and that since I am on the South Lake Board as an appointed municipal representative, I am advised by my council that there is no conflict of interest. But for the sake of transparency, I would want that to be on the record. Items requiring separate discussion. Counselor Vega?
Item number seventeen, just page eighty-eight. I'd like to bring that forward. It has to do with an always stop at a tier in King's Mayor.
I'm sorry, what was the number, Counselor?
Item number seventeen, page eighty-eight.
Number seventeen, okay. Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Fifteen.
Counselor, Counselor Ducho?
Now, I'm not sure if I need to pull out a consent item.
Sorry?
Do I, do I need to pull out a consent item or no?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm pulling out number four on the first agenda. And number six. And just check the last one, twenty, please.
Four, six, and twenty-one.
And twenty.
Okay, item number seventeen.
Okay? I'll pull four, please.
Yeah, fourteen relates to the development charges exemption, and thirteen relates to the billboard. So those are all related to the, so we may as well deal with them all. And item number fifteen has been pulled. As a matter of clarification, that is that item number ten, there's also an item number ten B. And so effectively, if we adopt the recommendations under, under consent, the request under ten B will be, will be referred to staff. Yep. So item number ten A and B then we'll deal with separately because of the declaration of Counselor Sponga. Okay. So what's left, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, then it would be the balance of the agenda, and the items that were pulled were four, six, ten, due to the conflict, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, twenty, and ten A.
Okay. Can I have a motion to pass all other items, with the exception of those? Counselor Sponga, Counselor Manuel? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Counselor Manuel?
Sorry, I was just going to ask, I'm not used to being surrounded by so many fans, but it's very difficult to hear. If people can make sure they speak up, because it's, I just find it very difficult to them.
Okay. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a presentation by Jim Grattmans, and he's the chair of the New Market Economic Development Advisory Committee. His presentation relates to item number four of the agenda, which is a recommendation with respect to the gigabit mile. And what I would like to do is to receive the, receive the presentation firstly, and then bring forward the, not only the report, but also the, the minutes of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, so we can deal with all of that at the same time. So I'll ask Mr. Grattmans to come forward, please.
Do you want to move around that corner?
I'm just going to go by consensus. I think we're okay with that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council, town. Think I'm in the A. V. business, I should know to press the mic button.
On the presentation, we permit up to ten minutes for a presentation, five minutes for a deputation.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Did you want me to go ahead, Chris?
No. Mr. Calhoun, do you want to do an introduction?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As members of council may recall, we held a joint council NIDAC meeting at the end of January, where we had three very high-profile speakers speaking about technology and innovation and the need for high-speed broadband internet in the community. And following that meeting, staff were directed to come back to council with a report on the economic impact and cost of implementing a gigabit corridor pilot project in New Market. We subsequently engaged one of the speakers that evening, Mr. David Sandle, and he prepared a report, a copy of which is included in the agenda today. With respect to economic development, it's changing, and we constantly need to reassess where we're going as a community in order to create well-paying jobs for residents of New Market. There are several examples around the world where communities are building or have built high-speed internet-capable communities, and they're really doing this in an effort to compete and differentiate themselves for the future. And we as New, we at, in New Market, at NIDAC, we're currently assessing our economic development strategy, at least in a very preliminary way. And this strategy that we are currently working under was adopted by council in 2010. But what we are finding, as we take an initial look, is that high-speed connectivity, connect, competitively-priced broadband, coupled with a spirit of collaboration in the community, will be required to drive economic growth in the future. So we're really pleased that this may be the first step that we go down this path. And I'd like to introduce Jim Grattmans, who's the chair of NIDAC, and, and who is involved, he's the principal with technology company E.T. Group. And Jim is a very active proponent of technology and innovation, and he serves on several committees on a volunteer basis in the community. And I'd like to ask Jim to maybe make a brief overview about the Sandle study and NIDAC's input into the study and findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grattmans?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. Thanks for this opportunity to share a few minutes. And I do want to recognize that there's a number of people in the audience that are interested in this, supporting this initiative from the chamber, from NIDAC. We have a number of NIDAC members here, Venture Lab, and I believe there actually may be some others as well. So forgive me if I've missed you, but this is an important issue, we believe, economic development and beyond that. And what I wanted to do this, this afternoon, is just give you a little bit perspective, not so much on the report itself, but rather on, on the journey that we're walking along and, and try and help make sense of why this is so important to us as a community. So the first point is exactly that, that this is a step along the road. Implementing broadband in, in significant capacity is increasingly prerequisite for any community due to viability. But it's important to know, when you're on a road, where are you going? So just wanted to put this here, we believe that in New Market, we're really, at the end of the day, trying to build a sustainable and vibrant community that offers a high quality of life to its residents. That's really where we're going. And as Chris described to you at NIDAC, as economic development advisors, we're trying to help council and the town review issues or opportunities that might help with this. And as of 2010, we have three specific focal areas, which are listed here. So one is around developing and evolving intelligent community or smart connected city concept for, for the town. Second is having input and participating in developing the post-secondary education strategy. And finally, similar efforts around the development of the Young Davis Corridor, which is a critical economic development opportunity for the town. So if this is where we're going, one of the interesting things about broadband is that it is an absolute prerequisite for all three of those initiatives. So increasingly, we do business over the internet, we participate in education over the internet, we socialize over the internet. And so the requirements of, of the data and the traffic are growing so quickly that we need a very robust infrastructure to participate in that. The thought I would, I would ask us here is, you know, is gigabit broadband infrastructure, is that going to give us a competitive advantage, or is it table stakes? And I would argue for us here that really it's what's required as we're moving forward in, in the short and, and long term, it's an absolute requirement for any community to have that there. So if we look at broadband infrastructure as table stakes, simply the place that we're going to build on, as economic development strategists, we're thinking about how can we drive a competitive advantage for New Market? That comes through layering applications and technologies on top of that infrastructure. So similar to your roads and, and streets, and, you know, roads and streets by themselves are not very helpful. When you start to put homes and businesses and institutions on those roads and streets, they become increasingly meaningful, similar to broadband infrastructure. So I'll talk very briefly about what those three layers, business productivity and communications, are. L. O. B. applications, which is line of business applications, and then custom apps, and have a, share a little bit about how that's being applied in New Market. So business productivity and communications is really using technology to enable and, drive efficiencies around communication. So we're driving collaboration tools, we're using data analytics and data to drive over that infrastructure, so that we can bring all sorts of different players to the table in a timely and efficient manner. And we have a great example of that just within New Market. So we have, calling it the New Market's Innovation Team. It's made up of partners from the hospital, the town, the chamber. We have some NIDAC members on there, there's business members, some education members, we have some large corporations represented there. And this team comes together to help drive these kinds of initiatives. So at that base level, on top of the broadband, you need these tools. Line of business apps, so came across this formula, I thought was very apt for this app. So apps for smart city, it really is a combination of intelligent places, people, intelligent people trying to be innovative, plus data, plus mobile apps or other applications on the internet, plus community, plus services, brings us to a city as a platform, which is increasingly where the world is going. Cities are driving their economies and their sharings and their social pieces increasingly over the internet. The line of business areas are those listed below, some of them are listed there. So transportation efficiencies, how do we drive e-government so that we can be more efficient and, and more open and accessible with our government services? Same with healthcare, energy, economic development, and many more, but this is where we're going with line of business apps. Here in New Market, we've got two great examples of, of two going on right now. So first of all, healthcare, with South Lake Regional Health Center leading that, we have, they have created an incubation site, Create I.T., where they are bringing together researchers and doctors together with entrepreneurial companies, and trying to find ways to accelerate the development of the research and bringing that forward into the community faster. On the energy side, New Market Tay Hydro has, you know, many years ago, put in smart meters, and they've now got a pilot program where they put, I think they were up to five hundred Wi-Fi-enabled thermostats into the homes, that those are connected to, to the smart meters, and so over the internet back to New Market Tay Hydro. And then they're also connected to something called Good Coins, and this is through a company, partnership with a company called Zero Footprint. Good Coins is a internet, is a, you know, internet application where you can go in and sign up and do, earn some coins for doing good. In this case, saving energy through this technology application will earn you coins on Good Coins, which are then donated back to South Lake Regional Health Center, which will purchase new neonatal equipment for the hospital through this. So this is a, a great example of partners and, and technologies coming together over the internet, over broadband, to drive good on driving down energy use and driving up good things like healthcare. So a couple of great apps, just starting, lots more to drive to that. But all of that requires significant broadband. So NIDAC, we've talked about these things, we looked, we saw the Sandle report, we've been discussing these kinds of things for quite some time. And we wanted to bring two recommendations, which you'll find in our minutes from our last meeting. And they are, basically, we endorse that report in principle and agree with the findings that it makes a lot of sense to have a pilot and move forward on this to, to explore how we can get to our future faster. And we'd encourage council to have a gigabit corridor pilot in place for early 2015, so that we generally require some action very soon, we think. So I just want to finish up here. So with that Sandle report, I understand you've got a staff report sitting on your desk as well. And with these, with our recommendations from NIDAC, we hope to leave you with the, the sense of urgency that we'd like to see you act now, to do something, to, to allow, and in fact, the something is this, endorse the staff report that would request an RFP to move forward and get some more specific proposals for moving forward at this meeting or at this session, so that when you come back in January, we actually have something to, to work on, we don't have to start again fresh. So, and where we think that will take us, will help take us, is to that sustainable and vibrant community that we all want to be part of. So again, we're on a journey, this is a step along the journey, we feel it's a very important one, and we appreciate your consideration and hope that you'll join us in the enthusiasm for where this can take us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions of clarification, Counselor Sponga?
More than a question, just a, a comment, and I just want to thank Jim for his presentation and the effort of the whole group, actually. I think this is a no-brainer to a certain extent. The last couple of months, all I'm hearing around me is from as little as, younger than eleven years old, somebody called Siri everywhere, it's like Siri, when is council meeting? I can see that happening very soon, or Siri, how much do I owe on my taxes? To some seventy-seven-year-old telling me that I should get this app in my, with my insurance, that on a daily basis monitors the way I drive and reduces potentially my costs. So it's a no-brainer that that's where the industry is going, and that we have to keep up if we want to have a sustainable community and a sustainable quality of life. So I want to, I really want to thank, express my thanks. You guys did a great job, and I've got a little bit more that I'd like to discuss when we raise the item. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Thanks for the presentation, Jim. I just want to thank yourself and members of NIDAC and members of other community organizations that have been working at this diligently for a very, very long time. And the- And the, I think that, you know, sitting on NIDAC and also, and I just want to point out too, and I think it's important to point out that the, I chair a planning economic development at the region, at the regional level, this is also one of the key two pillars that the region's focusing on as well. And so we're in sync with regional goals as well, which I think is important because it means we're investing in the same, or we're investing time and energy in the same area and the same, some of the same goals. I guess part of it is around this sense of urgency, and I thought maybe you could expand on a little bit, but my understanding is, or my feeling is, from what I've read and learned along the way, is that this is a, this is a direction that virtually, if not everyone, every, every community will go in eventually, and it's happening around the globe already. And so the question is, where are you in that process? And I think there's a, my understanding is not just a chance to keep up, but to lead here. And you, some might say, okay, well, you're leading, but if everybody else is going to do it. But I, would it not be fair to say, and maybe you could talk more about this, is that from experience elsewhere, once you're a leader, each new development, each new opportunity that comes along, you tend to lead that next wave as well, and it gives you a competitive advantage repeatedly. Is that fair to say? And could you expand on that?
Mr. Grackman?
Yes, yes. So I would agree with that, that first of all, it is, as I said earlier in my presentation, I think it's table stakes to get into this. I actually did a little quick search this morning looking for what cities are doing. And it takes about five keystrokes and you can find examples across the globe of cities all developing apps, putting in infrastructure, all trying to do the same thing, find a competitive edge and, and first of all, be sustainable so that they're, they have meaning and for their, for their residents and their businesses. John, I think you're absolutely right. You need to get on this and get the basics in there because if we make this about the infrastructure, about broadband, we're going to spend all our time thinking about, you know, what are the, we don't think about what kind of gravel type you put in the road. We don't think about, you know, how much asphalt versus, you know, those kinds of things. We know we need roads. Once we have roads, we can start to apply our efforts to, you know, how are we going to accelerate the healthcare apps that create it now is already beginning to work on? How can we become a leader in transportation? We already are doing some great things, I think, in Newmarket in collaboration with the region. How can we get ahead of that further? And I would say that it's not only to be, to get ahead of everybody. I think there's a fantastic opportunity for Newmarket to collaborate with other communities that maybe have stepped out a little further in particular areas than us. And it's like the old, you know, picking a baseball team where you've got the bat and you're putting your fingers up and who's going to pick last? It never ends, so you want to continue to build on these things. That's what I was trying to illustrate to you where the, you know, the line of business applications and then the custom apps on top of that. That will never end. It will continue to get better, but you need to be able to run this. And to do that, you need broadband. I don't know if I've done your point justice, John, but...
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's, I just, statement, but I think it summarizes partially to what you're saying, a part of what you're saying. It's what we do with it eventually is hard to predict to the future. There's going to be so many opportunities, but to have the infrastructure, the backbone there, and to start to see this as, as critical infrastructure in a, in a community like roads and pipes and sewers and then what we can do with it is multiple, who we can partner with, what the opportunities that lay ahead. But it's much, once you've got that, but it's much more than that. It's, there's a lot of social infrastructure that has to be applied as well.
We talk, we talk a lot about, you know, and I'm kind of in that world with my business, but we talk a lot, a lot about being innovative or creative. And we find even in our own business, very hard to be those things if you can't dive in. You can, you can do it in theory and you can get to a certain point, but when you dive in and you start to apply that and try and build something and you bumped into a roadblock and you move around it, and that's when you really become creative and innovative. And I think, you know, most communities in the world are trying to become more innovative. They don't necessarily understand how to do that or what it means, but they want to get there because they understand that being innovative is going to keep them in the game, you know?
Thank you.
If you, if the only relevance at a certain point was you were on the railway line and the railway didn't come, and we have lots of communities in Ontario to, you know, that have just disappeared because the only relevance was around the railway line.
Thank you. Councillor Twinning?
Thank you, Jim, for the presentation and, I mean, the, the information that we got from the consultant was really informative and found it really interesting. I don't know if you can comment on that. I don't know if they're here today, but just a couple of questions I had and just trying to get my head wrapped around it. And I don't know whether I'm reading this right or, I, I found like perhaps the Southlake perspective of it wasn't really as, I thought, as excited about it as I thought they would be. Because they were a major stakeholder and they kind of, I think one of the comments was, you know, gigabyte community isn't a specific driver for us. And I'm just wondering if you can comment on, on those points that were put into, the bullets that were put into the report that we received. Because obviously, Southlake is, you know, that was part of, when we had our meetings, that was, you know, I mean, they were an integral part of that.
I actually don't want to comment on it, Jim, because I was not there for, and I probably would take it out of context. I don't know if we can have someone, Karen DeBeau was part of that. I don't know if that's in protocol, if you want to say anything.
Or even if, I mean, I just, I didn't know or follow up with about that. I just, I don't know, just a feeling I got. I mean, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I guess, what I guess my apprehension is, and it's not, you know, I mean, not that I don't want it to go forward, is I think it's explaining to the community. It's hard for the community to understand what we're doing. And I think that's, and definitely that's what came through the report too, is getting that buy-in and making them understand the importance of it. So that was sort of, it was more of a comment, I guess. And then my other question is, I don't know, you talked about, it seems like a lot of communities are starting to go down this road. This is going to become a norm probably in the future. I don't know if there's any other, any of our other municipalities, our neighboring ones in York Region are, that are, have done this? And also, just like anything, technology, this kind of thing, usually down the future, it seems like prices, like the, it gets cheaper to do later on. I'm just wondering if this is something that would happen, like if we were to wait a bit of time, are those costs going to come down dramatically?
Well, it's always a fine balancing act. So communities locally that have done this, Waterfront Toronto is a fantastic example. They went to RFP and brought a supplier in to build it out for them, and they're in process of doing that. You know, what's resulting from that? One number sticks in my head and there's a condo building, one of the new condo buildings there.
Yeah.
That's going for $99, $999 a square foot. So, you know, a million dollars, thousand square foot condo because of its location, partly on the lake, but I think part of it is the ability to, to, you know, do commerce or live in that environment for broadband's avail. So should you wait or should we wait to make, to draw an extreme? You know, all prices will continue to come down. If you waited until today to put internet in your home.
Right.
Let's say, and you bought it, you finally did today, you would spend the next how many years trying to figure out how this internet thing works and...
It's a balance.
Because you've gone through that already now.
Sure, yeah.
I think that, to me, that's an analogy that we could draw.
Yeah.
You have to, you don't want to be the first in, you know, this is totally bleeding edge. It's not. Communities are doing this globally now. The Sandal report cites a number of them.
Yeah. I just didn't, I didn't know whether any of the York, are there, are municipalities within the region had...
I don't know any of the York, any other ones in York Region that are specifically trying to drive to a gigabyte quarter right now.
Okay.
I'll give you one example. So we've been looking at, you know, post-secondary education. We put a bid in and we lost to, you know, our southern neighbors to, to be competitive here, because we don't have the geography that Markham or Richmond Hill or Vaughan have. We're not that close to the city. We're, we're not as big. We don't have the people, et cetera, et cetera. But we can put in the infrastructure to create hugely powerful education entity over the internet. And many communities have done that in Canada as well, right?
Okay.
So there, it's ways to make us competitive if we're creative about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Veig?
Thank you. Look, everyone, so Jim, thank you very much and thank you very much for all the, all of the NIDAC committee members. Tremendous amount of work. And I know, for example, with Karen, Karen here has been working on it for a number of years to get us this far. So just want to let everybody know that this is a, something that we've been working on for years and years and years, and it's finally reached this level. I also agree that we're not pioneers. Other people have done this and they've been able to show success and while there's not exactly a recipe book going forward, we do know that there's a lot of potential there because people have been quite successful with this. One of the things I look at in, is in our manufacturing area, the Harry Walker Parkway, and I'm so glad that you identified that. Everyone knows in Ontario and elsewhere, manufacturing's been on the decline. And one of the main reasons for that is the manufacturing technology itself has gotten so good that you can export that technology. And one thing about building an infrastructure and moving into advanced manufacturing that requires that infrastructure is you can't export the infrastructure. The jobs that are coming in will be staying here for a while. It's not very easy to transfer those jobs. And that's why I'm very, very excited about bringing, you know, bringing this infrastructure to the Harry Walker Parkway and then promoting the fact that we have it and bringing in that type of advanced manufacturing that quite frankly is dependent on that. They wouldn't be here, they wouldn't come here if we don't have that. Perhaps you can comment on that on, and perhaps we'll even ask Mr. Kelly, our economic development officer, to talk a little bit about advanced manufacturing and the type of infrastructure they're looking for and the type of jobs that would bring to our community. I know I'm asking you this without any warning or preparation, but I'm sure you've given it a lot of thought, a lot of work has been done in that area.
Mr. Grackman's, give you first choice?
Do I, do I go or shall I?
Sure, Mr. Kelly.
So I would say, when we talked about advanced manufacturing, so many years ago now, we wanted to find jobs that were more knowledge working jobs than physical labor jobs. And the reason for that was because we were running out of space and we can't build more big factories in Newmarket. We have no more geography. We can build buildings up and so we can put people in those. But you can't put, you know, 100-ton presses in those buildings, right? They need to be knowledge worker jobs. So, and there's also very good fit and synergy with some existing assets of the town. Southlake was, you know, the first one that came to mind for us. So we have a lot of, you know, fantastic hospital, lots of great work there, going on there, research going on already. How do we capture that and then bring, encourage and bring some advanced manufacturing skill sets to those doctors and researchers to help them commercialize their services? So that was kind of the thinking. Chris, did you want to?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. If I could expand upon that. We know of, of a few companies on, in the Harry Walker Parkway area. For instance, something as simple as video training to keep up to date to current technologies. They have significant difficulty just trying to take part in a video conference because the, the bandwidth capability is not there. So it's, the image would be jittery or stop producing. It's just something as simple as that to stay up to date in current technologies. We also find that, you know, as businesses get more sophisticated, sending CAD CAM drawings, upload, download drawings, you need the bandwidth capability that will continue. And also even things like holding sales meetings around the world or, or staff meetings in different offices, video conferencing like that, again, is very important to the success and, and future growth of, of local businesses. And just as, as an aside in terms of manufacturing, we are finding manufacturing, and it's being documented, that manufacturing is coming back to the US, is coming back to Canada, primarily because of transportation costs, oil particularly, quality control issues when it's sent overseas and it comes back, that has been an issue. And so we are seeing, and in fact, in Newmarket, we have seen manufacturing employment growth over the last three years. So I think by having the capability of fiber or high-speed broadband available, it, it allows engineers and, you know, the architects and the people, the specialized people that require these services to develop and, I can't say invent new products, but to work seamlessly and develop these products for markets. And these are very high-value products that you can't make somewhere else in a low-wage area.
Thank you. Councillor Mucho?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jim, for your presentation. I, very interesting. I also liked the report that I read here. The, what is it, the Sandal report? Yes. Very interesting. And as you know, you know, I think I sort of explained my own position when we had the NIDAC meeting a while back on this issue. At that time, I had said that, well, and I know you had agreed with me, that it was something that we were trying to do that wouldn't really have an impact on the budget, on our taxpayer budget. And I know you agreed and that's why you were seeking partners.
I'm having some difficulty hearing you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Is this bit better? I'll move the microphone closer.
Yeah, I think it's just the fan behind you.
It's the fan in the background, sorry. I just have a few questions for you. The first one is just, what I want to go back to, you know, people who are watching may not understand, this is a little bit complex and I'm not a techie. So the way it is right now, what you're seeking to do is to help encourage businesses invest in Newmarket because we want to offer more broadband. And as it is right now, if a business wants to buy broadband to make their lives easier, they would have to, they could purchase that through an internet service provider at a wholesale price. That's correct? So far, okay. So the vision that, that is being given to us today is that we would, that the town of Newmarket would partner with some of these ISP providers and build the infrastructures that's, that people like Rogers don't want, are not really interested in doing right now, for whatever reason. But you want to do that in, in an effort to create jobs and a sort of environment that is similar to Amsterdam, London, Barcelona, San Francisco, Singapore? That's, that's the vision, okay? So I'm, I'm just confused. So are you saying that the town of Newmarket will be owning some of this? We, we've got infrastructure, once we built that infrastructure, we would be owning some? And then per, and then we would be selling it to these businesses? Is that what?
There's lots of options, councillor, and that's what is the next step, is to go and put out a, a request for proposal from, from internet providers or other partners that may, may be able to help with this and see what comes back. That may be the scenario or maybe, you know, an ISP-only solution. The challenge for us right now is that you can't easily buy large chunks of, of broadband from the current providers. That's one challenge. The other challenge is that when you run on a Rogers or Bell infrastructure platform, you are restricted to what you can do with that. You can, they, they own it, they're going to control it. So those are the two, two big things that communities have to look at, is how do we get a bigger pipe when the ISPs are saying, well, we may not make enough money from that, you know, soon enough to make it worth it? They can do it. They just don't want to yet because the opportunities for them are, are simply ISP service fees, right? So $50 or a thousand or whatever it is per month. The opportunity for the community is all around the economic development, the well-being of the community they're trying to describe to you.
We can, we can actually get into more details when we're discussing the report. Mr. Shelton?
Okay.
Just to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at a certain point, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to bring the report forward and to get an overview on it. I will address the councillor's question in terms of the approach that staff are recommending. NIDAC is here to just indicate their position and support in terms of moving forward with this gigabit strategy. So I would suggest that at some point you bring that staff report forward and get that overview.
I will. Okay. Further questions of clarification then councillor Kerwin?
I'm sorry, I was still in the...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. And I, and these are questions of clarification, not comments, which some other council members had. I actually have clarification questions. Now, what I wanted to ask in addition to that, so what you're saying then is you want to make it easier for businesses. You think that this is beneficial to taxpayers, you know, for business to come in here and create, I don't know, how many did you have, 200, over just, over 200 jobs? And I did the math that those jobs would pay just over $70,000 each. So it's quite a big investment. But I guess my, and I'll, I'll be, my position, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, or the question I have is, we have, after reading this report, and we can certainly talk about that when, when the agenda comes, comes and we make a decision, that it will require some investment from taxpayers. And we're not talking little bit, we're talking about well over a million, even though the report says up to 1.4 million. I understand fiber optics, very expensive stuff, and it changes all the time and it's very risky. I, I'm just wondering why... I'm just wondering why, you know, if this council decides to go ahead with it, then I respect that. But my own position is it's a very risky thing.
Why do you think it's risky?
I believe it's risky because of the infrastructure, first of all. The infrastructure costs, and I read this report, even Newmarket Te Hydro said that it's not possible to do in certain corridors because of the pole, the infrastructure that exists. We would have to go through one of the options.
Counselor, we can raise that when we debate the report. We can bring the report forward.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I can save these comments again for...
That might be more appropriate. It's something that staff and that your other colleagues will need to address and to get the answers to. But let's restrict our comments or questions to questions of clarification. Mr. Gratmans is here to present NIDAC's position and then we can deal with the report shortly after that. Any further questions or clarification?
I'll save my questions for the staff.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Kirwin?
My comments, Mr. Mayor, might be for clarification, it might be for comments. But first of all, I would like to thank you, Jim, for the superb amount of work that you've been doing for a long period of time. And as a Counselor, when I look out into the audience and I see almost all the members of NIDAC here, yourself and Paul Montador and Barrett Farmer and Jim Alexander and Karen Dubois and Deborah Scott and so forth, and our mayor, Tony Van Beinen and John Taylor all sit on NIDAC. And NIDAC was created quite a while ago, probably a decade ago. And I strongly believe at this point that it behooves this council to step up to the plate and make a home run. We've asked you to sit on this committee for a long period of time. We've assembled some of the brightest and smartest business people in our community, all of them successful. All of the organizations are successful. And without any hesitation, I shall be supporting what you're doing. And it's time for us to recognize the work that our manager of economic development has done and the citizens of this committee have done all through the years to come up with such a creative, innovative way to drive this town forward into the future. And that's what I'm going to do. And we can't afford not to have you people let down. And thank you for the leadership and pushing us into a new direction that we must go into. There's no option here. The rest of the world is doing it. And if we lag behind, as we've done in certain fields before, we're going to fail. And we can't afford failure. We can't afford to allow this community to get behind and we can't afford the province to get behind or the nation to get behind, or we will become a have-not community. So let us step forward and show that we support the reason we formed NIDAC 10 years ago or 12 years ago and let us move forward with the road to the future and implement the strategy for the corridor pilot. I don't see any option. So thank you to all the members who have brought this to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Manuel?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to receive the deputant's presentation and then bring the matter forward so that we can have the discussion.
All right. Any discussion with respect to the discussion, all those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Thank you very much, Jim. A lot of hard work has gone into that and I know that your involvement with NIDAC is very much appreciated, not only by the committee but by this council. And so I appreciate you coming forward and explaining a very complex situation to us and helping us understand that better. So thank you very much, Jim. I'll bring forward then the Community Services Economic Development Report 2014-20 with respect to the gigabit pilot project. And at the same time, I would bring forward item number six. Well, we can deal with item number six after we deal with item number four because it'll either affirm the direction we're going into. As the mover, Counselor Manuel, would you like to speak to this?
I think you need a second.
Regional Counselor Taylor. Counselor Manuel?
Mr. Mayor, I'll speak briefly because I think what's important to note, and the report is abundantly clear, this commits us to moving forward on the next step on the process. It does not commit us to necessarily 100% move ahead, the cost, et cetera. This is about, as the deputant rightly described, getting more information so that we can make an educated decision. And I will say, just anecdotally, I had a conversation with the mayor of Centre Wellington, which is near Guelph, a very small community. And she was telling me in the county of Wellington, they've managed to lay 36 kilometers of fiber. And the business case they have is very compelling, not only from a municipal standpoint where they were able to find considerable cost savings operationally, just on not even having to send staff to manually read meters and think, it was just, the operational savings were considerable. And, you know, they were using, I forget how many, I'm not an expert either, but strands, they were only using two strands for their needs out of the fiber. And their ability to attract businesses is considerable. And I look at this, and I don't want to, especially put them on the spot, but I look at someone like Barrett Farmer, who's in our audience today, who represent Xe.com. You know, everyone knows that they're the number-one currency app, download app, in the world, Newmarket-based. Those are the jobs, these are the jobs of the future. And we only get these jobs, frankly, if we've got broadband, if we've got that fiber infrastructure. We could, you know, we've historically had a wonderful manufacturing base and that's great, but the jobs of the future, the jobs for all the young people today going forward, frankly, will be largely dependent on a network of broadband infrastructure. And while today doesn't necessarily commit us to absolutely going ahead with the project, it gets us that information so that early in the new term, our council will be able to move quickly. And while I do think it's becoming the norm that municipalities are introducing this infrastructure, you know, we need that one-up, that edge, if you will, around some of our neighbors. And, you know, when we talk about how small this corridor is and I hear like a community like Centre Wellington or Wellington County laying 36 kilometers of fiber, I just, I was awestruck. And that's, it's that kind of vision that is going to accommodate the jobs we need going forward. And if we don't act now, the question is, what is the cost of the broadband infrastructure? The question is, what is the cost of not doing the broadband infrastructure? And all these young people who are going away to university will come back, they're not going to be coming back to Newmarket. There'll be no jobs here. This is where the jobs are and this is where we need to move as a municipality. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I had John as the second, you were the second to bring it forward, John was the second on the motions. Okay? John, and then I'll have you then, Counselor Kirwin, okay? Regional Counselor?
Thanks very much. Similar comments, I'll keep it brief. I think that, I actually fundamentally believe that this is one of, if not the most important discussion or debate this council or any council will engage in in the past decade. And I know that's a big statement, but I believe it. I think that we have to give this a great deal of consideration. As it said, where this could or will take us or where it won't take us if we don't move forward could have a great deal of impact on the future of Newmarket, what we look like, how we, the kinds of jobs we have, impacts on so much else, traffic or infrastructure, et cetera. So I believe that, and I think it's also important to note here, that we're talking about moving to an RFP. So to not move forward at this point, when we've had the consultants do the work, bring forward a report, we've had endless hours, volunteer hours by different organizations, including NIDAC, but not limited to NIDAC, and a great deal of time by this council to pursue a strategic priority of the towns and of the regions, economic development strategy, I think to not move to the next step, which doesn't bind us, would make absolutely no sense. It'll be much, much more interesting and a much more important debate we'll have when we get the results of the proposal. You know, we will probably be looking at an investment. We don't know the size of it, depends on what structures or what proposals come forward or perhaps others will fill, the private sector will want to step in more fully or not. But when we look at that and look at the business model more closely, we'll have some really tough decisions. But the one thing I have no doubt about is that this is a direction we need to pursue as a community. We are in some ways the perfect community to be pursuing it. We're geographically bound, we're focused on knowledge jobs more than anywhere else without the employment lands that some areas have. And we have to take advantage of those opportunities and meet those challenges. And this is clearly the path forward in that direction. So I believe that we need to see the results of this RFP, do the due diligence we need to do to understand what the results mean and try to find a way to move forward in this direction. I have certainly learned enough over the last number of years and been educated enough by members in this audience today and others that I really, really believe that this is a watershed moment for our community and for the general topic. And I think we have a chance to not only keep up but to move forward and to brand ourselves as well as a community that's pursuing and moving forward in this area and will pay dividends for many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
Just some, Mr. Mayor, and I spoke about this earlier. You know, over the years, you know, we have assembled the best and the brightest within our community under the NIDAC umbrella. And they've been allied with the library and the conservation authority and with the hospital, Southlake. And they've come forward with recommendations and they've been working hundreds of hours to put this together. And as I've said before, it's, if we don't move forward, if we don't support this group, it's a slap in the face to them, quite honestly. Why would we bring the best and the brightest together and not move forward, at least as you say, Regional Counselor Taylor, to go forward to find out what the future has for us? I'm not afraid of the future. That's the direction we must move. And of course, combining our roots. And there's a thread there. I'm that thread. I combine our past with the future. So let us support the work of this committee, the Newmarket Economic Development Advisory Committee, in this recommendation. It's solid. So to you here in the audience who've done all that work, I appreciate it. And I hope to participate in it and I hope to use it and I hope to see the bright future that you've given to this town. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sponga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm optimistic about the choices this council is going to make. I think it's a compelling case to move forward and to maintain the sustainability of this community. I look at, all I have to do is look at some of those pictures on the wall and I don't see much difference here from the first wire that was pulled up in Newmarket. And I believe the first wire was, electrical wire that came up probably powered a few lights, but then it powered the radio train and then it powered a world-class hospital. So I think that the initial investment, it's time to make that initial investment if we want to move with the times and continue to have a sustainable community. I think what I've seen in the report here, Mr. Mayor, find some very interesting thing and great news. The community of Chattanooga, Tennessee, I'm very familiar with Chattanooga, a community of about 174,000, 175,000 people, went through an incredible recession, 2007, all the way up to 2010, when they started implementing some of this technology, some of the broadband. They'd seen a substantial return in a renaissance of the manufacturing and specialized manufacturing in that area. And it's a vibrant community that is really raising from the ashes like a phoenix. The other one, it's just last Sunday, I think it was obvious, so many of you maybe watch 60 Minutes, I know Counselor Taylor never misses it, but there are some businesses in the United States, it was reported, that just put in fiber to bypass some of the larger networks with an investment of up to $300 million, just so that they can beat traders, speed traders, they can beat the conventional traders by a millisecond. And whether we like it or not, it's influencing all the investments that we make, our pension funds and so forth. I think that it, to me, one of the things that I see here is, and I'm glad to hear some of the language that is around the table, that it's not necessarily a cost. A cost is related to a service or a product that is directly, to a certain extent, related to the lifetime of that service and a product. An investment, though, is related to something that has a long-time return. And a return that keeps renewing itself and it creates new opportunities. So I think that the discussion that I'm hearing around the table is a discussion that's positive, it's around the investments. Of course, there's going to be some tough choices. How much do we have to invest? But I think those choices are going to be based also on the analysis that we're going to get back from this report and it's going to show us what the return on investment is. And I think we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our community and to the next few decades, if we're doing secondary plans and look at 2031, 2041, we have to do this to assure the viability, the economic viability of this community. So I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. The only question I have to you, Mr. Mayor, to our staff is, in the report, I happened to notice that one of the recommendations was that we adapt the innovation ecosystem corridor concept. And I wonder if, through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, why isn't that recommendation here, at least to adopt that in principle? So to give the community a signal that we think investing in our future is very important and move forward, just clarification on that.
Mr. McDougall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counselor Sponga. The approach taken with the report was really that council received the initial report as developed by David Sandel and Associates and very clearly within that report identifies those quarters as Phase One pilot projects. So we've taken the view that inherent in receiving and supporting the Sandel report, that is the geographic area that we identified for Phase One.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nmuchu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions for staff and then some comments. In the report here from staff on page eight, you recommend that the town issue a request for information, which is called an RFI as opposed, sorry, a request for proposal, sorry, RFP, as opposed to a request for information. The report that I read specifies that a request for information is, in fact, should be used. And the reasoning for that, based on this report, is that it would be used in conjunction with a community engagement and visioning process to generate interest. Since providers usually have different technologies and infrastructure capabilities, RFI responses would be quite different from one another. And it goes on to explain why. In your report here, staff, you write that the report recommends that the town issue an RFI, seeking internet service providers.
If I could clarify, Counselor, I think the recommendation is an RFP.
Sorry, yes. Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Mayor, yeah. So staff is saying, we don't need an RFI, we want to go ahead with an RFP despite the recommendation, and you believe it's a better approach because you believe that it would enable council to make a more informed decision in 2015 in the first quarter. And then you go on to say, however, it's important to note that the RFP will be structured in such ways to ensure council has no obligation to award. So I have two questions for this. Number one, why are we rushing this through? Quite frankly, I don't believe that it's fair that, you know, you're tying the next council's hands with this project, which is a very complex project and a project that we don't really have any answers to as far as the impact on our budget. That's number one, is why we need to do an RFP.
Let's deal with number one then, Mr. McDougall.
And then I have another question for that.
Mr. McDougall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the consultant did speak to the request for information and we also had conversations with the consultant around the pros and cons to RFP and RFI and also spoke with our manager of procurement in that regard as well, to make sure that there was the opportunity for us to gain as much information as possible through RFP and still be in a position to not limit council's flexibility in making a decision once they have a fully informed amount of information before them early in the new term. The RFP does present the opportunity for us to gather information and be able to hammer out details, as has been recommended, is to take an approach that's really more of a calculated and what staff felt was responsible approach of working and facilitating with the private sector on trying to find an arrangement that would work where the municipality's financial exposure could be anywhere from zero through to a to-be-determined amount of money. But the Sandel report speaks more to what is referred to as Option B in the report, which deals more with us putting in our own infrastructure and in making that investment. So we've taken the initial approach for councils to do an RFP so we can get all the information possible. We can come back to the new term of council with a, as negotiated, a potential as possible. as possible, so council can make that much more of an informed decision. If we'd gone with an RFI for that phase, for that stage, we would get some high-level information for the new council, but we would then have to take a subsequent step, which would be an RFP. So it does enable us to move a little quicker. We felt in studying the RFI/RFP, it was a move that certainly didn't expose council to any undue risk, and we thought it would help the process to move forward as the new term begins.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio, your second question.
Okay, so in other words, you want to move quicker. I don't agree that a project of this enormity, and certainly Regional Counselor Taylor said it was an enormous project, should be made decision, this kind of decision shouldn't be made quick. I would be more comfortable with an RFI, as was suggested. Now, my second question to you then is if, so, because what you said in the report was, yes, we're getting an RFP, however, however, we're going to make sure that the RFP, that it's structured in ways to ensure council has no obligation to award. So my question is, do you believe that any bidder who is looking at this RFP is going to actually take it seriously and give us the best available pricing if they know that we're not really taking it that serious? We're not obligated, we're just, I mean, it just, to me, it is a request for information. That's what you're asking for. If you're going to stipulate in the RFP that we're not obligated, then make it an RFI. If you want to use the argument that we need to go fast, why? How long does it take to get an RFI or an RFP done? I'm just curious. How long would that take?
Mr. McDougal.
Is it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor DiMuccio. In terms of moving quickly, I mean, really what we're trying to do with the recommendations today is to basically get the marching orders that we can actually pursue an RFP over the next number of months. So it will take an amount of time to move from today through to being able to come forward to council, you know, with some concrete recommendations for consideration. So it will take, it will take time to do that. So it really, you know, comes down to, you know, RFP or RFI, the RFP being the direction that we feel will enable us to bring better information back to council so they can make that decision.
Okay, well, and, you know, I think that that's your position, it's not my position. I've sat on this council many terms where we've made decisions with not as much information as I would have been comfortable with, and it was just plowed through quickly. But I want to talk a little bit about the justification, because, you know, and I understand the NIDAC committee believes in this project. I think it's wonderful. It's great that we have a passionate committee, and it's great to have a vision. I think that's how we should be running the municipality. But I also believe that it's important that we look at that vision and make sure that this is implemented carefully. And when I read the, when I read this report, I wasn't very satisfied, and I'm going to tell you why. The report itself says that while the estimated economic impact provides guidance and justification for future investment in internet infrastructure, the process of final calculation has many limitations. It goes on to say that any decisions made by local officials and decision-makers must take into account the large number of economic variables, future policy decision, local, regional economic initiatives that will influence the economic output from any infrastructure investment. And I'm going to give you an example. The FIT program in Ontario, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm still speaking.
I have you at seven minutes now.
Okay, so.
I permitted you to go beyond five.
Right, but I can speak for seven minutes. Staff spoke as well.
I know. And we can come back to your further questions. I do have other people in the queue.
Okay, but you just cut me off, and I'd like to finish my point.
If you would finish that statement briefly.
And then I'll push the button if that's what you prefer.
That would be good. That's our process.
I'll push the button again to speak. A good example of decision-making when it comes to businesses and the economics in Ontario is the FIT program. You know, a government, a prior government, believed that by investing in green initiatives with FIT, that we would have all sorts of manufacturing companies invest in Ontario, New Market as well. We know that's not true now because years later, they're dropping like flies out of Ontario, they're going to the states. And you might disagree with me, but it's there, it's there, that information is there and it's available to the public. The actuality, what had happened with FIT is that it increased your hydro rates enormously, and that's what's paying for FIT. But that's an example, Mr. Mayor, of visions, of government visions, who believe in an economic, they have an economic vision, and they invest in it, and taxpayers lose out. With this process, Mr. Mayor, what concerns me is the infrastructure that we don't even know how much it's going to cost taxpayers.
Thank you.
So I will come back to that.
Yep, thank you.
If, we have how many times to speak? Three times?
Two, three times to speak.
Three times, thank you.
Thank you. I have another speaker now. Counselor Emanuel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I did want to address a couple of comments. One, the vote today does not tie the hands of the future council. It's actually the exact opposite. We actually are putting the decision point with all the facts in front of the next council. If the next council in Q1, whenever they get the report, decides that they don't have the information, they can vote to defer. If they've got the information there that's sufficient, they can vote at that time to move forward. In fact, we're setting the stage for the next council to make the decision. It's not tying their hand, so that's important to note. I think it's also important to note that this is not comparable to FIT. This is actually more comparable to, you know, with the twenties or the early, you know, the earlier 20th century, laying a road to a new community. And FIT was about incentivizing through tax breaks that they don't normally do, that they can't do anymore, and that's why we lost these businesses. This is absolutely about core infrastructure, about the jobs of the future. And all we're doing in this report is getting that information. Staff's able to do this work behind the scenes, because we all know with the election that all of you will be busy with, me not so much, will be busy with this fall. They're able to do the work behind the scenes, issue this RFP, get the information so that in Q1, the new council can make a decision. I actually think there couldn't be anything more efficient in use of time, and if there are not the facts there that are required to make that decision, that council can defer that decision. But I actually, this is, this moves us forward at a time that is traditionally slow for staff, because council is consumed otherwise, and it makes total sense that staff can be working on the, frankly, the infrastructure that brings us the jobs of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio, your second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not comparing FIT to this. I was comparing the visions of governments when it comes to the economy of Ontario and how that affects each and every individual taxpayer. We know that I would love to partner, if we could find a partner, and I said this at NIDAC last year, if we could find a partner, I'm all for this, because it's a good thing for New Market taxpayers, it's a great thing for investment and for businesses. But if we have to invest money, and when I read this report, which really goes from it could cost us from zero to 1.4 million to even more, we just don't know, I'm not going to make a decision based on very loosey-goosey, I just can't. I'm sorry, I cannot. As far as saying, again, to Counselor Emanuel's comments, you know, this is not an obligation, well, then, if, fine, then ask for an RFI, a request for information. I don't think a matter of two weeks or a month is going to make a difference in this. What I do believe, however, like I said earlier, Mr. Mayor, before you told me to speak again and push my button again, was that we need to respect the democratic process during the election, and if you want to run on that, and if any council here who, like Counselor Kirwin or Counselor Vay, or anyone who spoke in favor of this, if they want to run on that, then go to the taxpayers and say, this is what we're doing. You haven't done that effectively. And quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, if it's a vision that the community wants, then let's do it. But we haven't, we've only gone to a few stakeholders, we've only gone to a small committee, and I have issues with that. Really what you're doing essentially is you're asking, if this does cost taxpayers, which I would be completely opposed to, you're asking taxpayers to foot the bill for a business so that they can prosper. And I ask again, how this helps every individual taxpayer here? I ask you that. Here's what people are saying at the doors. They're talking about investing in our parks, they're talking about investing in our sewers, our water, better roads.
The report is around the Jacobit Mile. Please, if we could stay with that subject.
It doesn't matter, Mr. Mayor, you are asking this council to pass something that will have an effect on, on the decision.
If we could restrict your comments with respect to the recommendations in the report, I would appreciate that, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm making comparisons, and I'm fully allowed to do that, okay? I'm making comparisons. You cannot cut me off for doing that.
I'm asking you to stay with the subject of the report.
The point of the matter is, Mr. Mayor, you're asking taxpayers to invest in something, and I haven't heard anyone at the door say, I want to invest over a million dollars to bring in broadband and more infrastructure. I haven't, I haven't heard that. What I have heard is, let's use our taxes to create better parks and better roads. Our water's a big issue, sewers, those are the things that people want to invest in. I understand and appreciate NIDAC is here for a purpose, and I think it's wonderful. I think that they're doing a great job. I don't necessarily share their vision, that's okay. It's okay for me to say that I don't speak for the vision. It's also okay for me to say that if we invest in this without knowing all the information as was, as was said by doing an RFI instead of an RFP, then I can't support it. As far as you saying that an RFP is no obligation, Mr. Mayor, the reality is, an RFP is a request for proposal, which basically implies that we will be looking at this very seriously. I've never heard of an RFP being done and then saying, well, we're not obligated to take it seriously. And that's what you're telling taxpayers today? The other thing I wanted to say before, before I, I'm done here, is that, you know, you want, the infrastructure required, and the public should know this, the investment in infrastructure for this kind of project is enormous. It's enormously expensive. We're talking about fiber optics, we're talking about, we don't even have the infrastructure as, according to this report, according to New Market to Hydro, we didn't have the infrastructure in certain areas, but there's other options and that's fine. But those options do, will impact the community. If you, if we put ducts through the trails, as was said here, what does that mean? That we're going to rip up our trails so that we can? The point is, Mr. Mayor, we've got hydro poles on Davis Drive that we could have implemented to put underground years ago, but that never happened. That's what I'd rather see first. That's just my position. And again, I don't, I don't think this is, this is the way that I'd like to go if, you know, I would, I would put forth an amendment, in fact, I will put it right now, that I will amend this to read that staff seek an RFI instead of an RFP. And I'll ask for a secondar. If not, then I will not be supporting this.
Okay, thank you. So is there a secondar that, so the amendment that is on the floor now then, subject to a secondar, is that recommendation number two is that the request for proposals be amended to read request for an RFI?
Ask.
Yes.
Question, verification.
To the counselor. I guess I'm just flabbergasted. I thought I heard a dozen reasons why you don't support this direction in any way, and now you'd like to move, go for a request for information. Is that correct?
No, Mr. Taylor, that is not correct.
Just point of order. At this point, I'm going to wait for a secondar for the motion. And I'll ask a third time, is there a secondar? So the motion fails in the absence of a secondar. Thank you.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor, I just wouldn't, wondering, could we, yes, one more thing. Could we get an update on the Finland trip? Two years ago, you went on a trip to Finland for an economic vision. I haven't seen anything come out of that.
That question's not relevant to that, okay? That question's not relevant. Fine, thank you. Okay, all things, now, I haven't had an opportunity to express my own views. Counselor Vae, you're in the queue.
Thank you very much. It's very interesting listening to this debate, and a great report and good discussion, I suppose. But one thing I'd like to point out, it was said a few times that we're rushing into this. I'm looking here in the audience and I see, and I see Deborah Scott, the CEO of our chamber. Deborah, we worked on a smart New Market when you were with Bell a decade ago, and I remember chairing that, and Karen. We've had these discussions for years and years, and large public discussions, including presentations and deputations here at council. Economic Development Committee has been looking at this for years. This is not something that they just came up with at their last meeting. We have been watching other communities. We're not, we're not pioneers in this, but we certainly don't want to be left behind. So I just wanted to get clear to the public that this discussion started a decade ago, and there'd be a lot of champions and a lot of due diligence going, going on it. And after a decade, after a full decade of discussion on this, we're now asking, with an RFP, for a bit of due diligence on it. It doesn't commit us to anything at this point, it provides information for the new council. But this is the due diligence of a 10-year discussion. I will be voting in, in favor of taking this next step, getting the RFP, getting the hard information I need to be able to make a decision on this, including costs, including benefits, and the same type of considerations, and those are the type of considerations all Economic Development Committee members will want to look at, too, all members of council and the new council will want to look at. But at some point, you do have to start getting that hard information. And I just want to stress with the public, even though it's been said rushing into this, this has been a decade in the making to get us to this point.
Great. Thank you. My own observations is that scalable high-speed broadband is important, is as important to our community as rivers and roads and rail were to our past. So this is, this is our gateway into the future, and if we fail to deliver that, then I think we're sadly disappointing our constituents and the people who want to live and work in our community. This request for proposals is to seek out partners, to seek out options, to seek out the level of investment, and it will do so in a very defined basis. Counselor Emanuel made a good point. What this does is this enables us to make an educated decision with facts, and it prepares the next council to make a decision to move forward, or to modify the plans, or to seek partners, or to look for options. One option might well be that it's Wi-Fi and not necessarily digging up roads, as everybody suggests. So I very strongly support this. I want to say thank you very much to our Economic Development Advisory Committee for helping us shepherd our way through and for clearly bringing a business perspective to a municipal decision. That was why we created NIDAC. We've heard what NIDAC has to say, and I think we should listen, but more importantly, I think we should act. So I will be supporting this. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of the recommendations? Opposed. That's carried. It is about 3 o'clock.
Do you want to deal with the minutes?
Yes, that's a good idea. I'd also like to bring forward item number six then, and I think it would be appropriate to, to receive the recommendations under item number six, because the recommendations that are contained therein are being adopted through the adoption of the, through the adoption of the thing. Motion received, Regional Counselor, seconded by Counselor Emanuel. All those in favor? And that is carried. Are we ready for a break? Do we, we do have a couple more deputations.
I think you keep the four of us deputing.
Right? Fair enough. Good, that's good. Thank you. Our next deputation, next item then, is a deputation from Melanie Bell and Mr. Paul Harrison, and that is relative to the petition presented for the Tom Taylor Crescent and the proposed walkway. Ms. Bell and Mr. Harrison, if you could come forward, please. And our deputations permit up to five minutes.
Linda. Linda. Hello? Everyone hear me? Okay. Hello, everyone? It's my first deputation, so please bear with me.
You're not due to the meeting.
No, no. Mayor Tony von Bynan and Town Council, thank you for taking the time today and listening as you allow us to voice our concerns as residents and taxpayers of New Market. My name is Melanie Bell, and with me is my neighbor Paul Harrison. We have been asked to represent our community and Tom Taylor Crescent, some of who are present in chambers today, regarding a directive from the town that will place a walkway behind the homes of the addresses 260 to 294 Tom Taylor Crescent. The town's position is that a walkway behind these homes is necessary to provide easy access to the few who desire to take a shortcut to Young Street through our neighborhood. Yet, a petition signed by over 85% of our neighborhood is in opposition of this walkway. My deputation today, on behalf of our community, will outline why we are in opposition of such a plan. Earlier this summer, the town of New Market provided notice to our neighborhood that construction of the proposed walkway would commence later this year. We would like to thank our Ward 6 counselor, Mary DiMuccio, for arranging the town to stop all work that was scheduled for the construction until our deputation was heard today and council was able to consider our appeal. We would also like to thank Counselor DiMuccio for her support in joining our opposition to the project. Our first intention today is to identify reasonable objectives to discontinue plans for the development of this walkway. Our second intention is to appeal to our counselors as individual homeowners, many of whom have lived on Tom Taylor Crescent since it was first developed, who deserve a say on the vision of our neighbor, our own neighborhood. We believe that the best recommendations on a community vision come from those who live, work, and play in those neighborhoods. The following points explain our position. Number one, there was no indication and there were no formal plans of whom have lived on Tom Taylor Crescent since it was first developed, who deserve a say on the vision of our neighbor, our own neighborhood. We believe that the best recommendations on a community vision come from those who live, work, and play in those neighborhoods. The following points explain our position. Number one, there was no indication and there were no formal plans from either the town of Newmarket or our developer, made to residents of Tom Taylor Crescent, that a walkway just bordering our property line would be constructed. Had there been awareness of such a proposal, it's fair to say this may have altered our decision to purchase our current homes. Number two, like most homeowners, we are deserving of privacy and safety. As residents of Tom Taylor Crescent, we genuinely believe our safety and privacy will be in jeopardy if a new walkway is constructed behind our property line, as this borders just meters from our glass doors. In fact, our petition presented to council today includes the signature of a York Region Police Officer and an RCMP Officer, our neighbors, who agree with our position on security. The construction will have an impact on the existing shrubbery that already provides a buffer for privacy. This will now be replaced with a walkway just meters from our windows. Needless to say, the view of strangers walking within steps of our living rooms, or as we enjoy serenity in our backyards, is discomforting. Number three, the construction of this walkway threatens the existing vegetation, including shrubberies and trees, as well as vulnerable habitats. The town of Newmarket prides itself on preserving the existing environment. We have seen plans for an increase in development townwide, and we are concerned about what this has on the impact of green space, our own neighborhood among them. Our neighborhood understands the town's position on this construction, and I would like to talk about this briefly. We are proud that Newmarket is an accessible community. As residents, we believe every individual is deserving of safe, walkable routes. But I need to stress that this project is not about safe access, it's about easy access. Two very different things. All homeowners on Tom Taylor Crescent and adjoining homes have access to Young Street. In fact, many residents enjoy the opportunity to bike or walk the short distance, to Clear Meadow, to access Young Street. It's healthy. It gets us out and gives us an opportunity to enjoy our neighborhoods. It came to our attention that this project was decided because of a handful of complaints that a few residents were accessing Young Street by going through the private Quaker property that separates our homes. Like the town, we too believe this is unfair to the property owner. In this case, why not ask them to place signs or fencing to prohibit access? Why spend tax dollars and change the entire landscape for the existing property owners simply because of a complaint? We present to you today a petition signed by the majority of homeowners in the Tom Taylor subdivision, including adjoining subdivisions, and collectively ask council today to reopen the issue of the pathway construction and direct staff to end the project. On behalf of the Tom Taylor Crescent community, we thank council for giving us the opportunity today to speak and ask them to appeal their decision, and we would like to thank Counselor DiMuccio for her intention, after our deputation, to motion for council to reopen the decision and vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison, did you wish to speak as well, or?
I think, I think my friend and neighbor has adequately covered everything.
Okay, thank you. Questions of clarification then? Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, I know that this is questions for clarification, but I wanted to thank you, Melanie, and all the community of Tom Taylor Crescent. I know that you herald, you headed this initiative, and I think you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Well done. I certainly support you, and I will certainly be presenting a motion, two motions to council, and ask for their support based on the facts of your deputation today.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
No further questions then?
Yeah.
Receive the deputation and entertain any motions to come out of that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive the deputation, and I would like to present a motion afterwards.
Let's receive the deputation first, seconded by Counsel Emanuel. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. I understand that there's a Mr. George Ivanoff who wishes to speak item number two. Is Mr. Ivanoff here?
How does this work? I sit here?
That's right. You sit there, close to the mic so we can hear you, and you have up to two minutes, or sorry, up to five minutes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council for hearing me, and your staff for making this possible for me. I'm a trustee of the Young Street Monthly Meeting of Religious Society of Friends. We've occupied that meeting house since it was finished in 1812. About 25 years ago, we sold 33 feet along our northern boundary to a developer wishing to construct a commercial enterprise to the west of us. And I understand that was eventually sold to Rodeo, a residential developer who built the current housing development there. At that time, we weren't sure of the fate of that, of that, our additional 33 feet, and so the total was 66 feet for a future roadway through that, through that property. I did understand that there was a trail to be built in the back of that. The developer had constructed a board fence in order to help prevent some of the residences from crossing onto our property to use Young Street. Unfortunately, there, the residents there are very creative in their ability to access over the fence. Sometimes bicycles are taken over the fence, sometimes boards are removed. And the matter had escalated quite considerably until last year, when we met with their building supervisor, I can't remember his name, who assured us that he would do the repairs to the fence. And our understanding was that he would also lobby the town to go ahead and construct the trail. I can understand the residents' concerns regarding the trail. I myself, though once having been a resident of the town of Newmarket, now live in a neighboring municipality, we moved into a house that had a very large garden, but it wasn't on our property. It was on conservation land. And after 25 years of benefit of that, of that garden, the town where I reside decided that they would put in the trail. And many of the residences along our street were very concerned at that time, and some of them came to council to oppose it. A fence was eventually put up and the trail was built. I can now say that almost all the residences on that street use that trail as well and find it, it's quite an improvement to the town, and they can see the benefits that their neighbors receive from that trail. It's in considerable use. I think that connecting the homes to our west to Young Street is an important part, and I'd like to urge council to go ahead. Mr. Mayor, about a year ago, we did write to you, Barbara Horvath, the clerk of our meeting, requested that the town go ahead and, and construct the trail, and we did meet, or we did receive a letter in response indicating that the trail would begin following public consultation this year for construction next year. We're certainly hoping that would, that would continue. So that's, those are my comments. But I do have one question. It's probably not fair to present to the, to the new Commissioner here of Transportation, is it? However, there is a report that was made to council called the Newmarket, Town to Newmarket Urban Centers Transportation Study, and it was dated April 2014. And in that, it outlines a number of improvements to the town's transportation infrastructure from transit to roadways and trails as well. And for the 2013, 2031 improvements, it includes a roadway that's labeled Road L on one of your drawings, as actually going through this property that we're discussing now. A roadway that would connect from the west and connect to Young Street. So I just wanted to know whether that report is currently, is still an approved report from town and whether it's a viable improvement that the town is considering for implementation by 2031?
I'll ask our CIO to respond to that.
Mr. Mayor, I think in fairness to our new commissioner, we wouldn't pose that question to him. Our director planning could answer that, but there may be other information that relates to the proposal in that area that council would benefit from a staff report on, so I just wanted to, to make that point. If you'd like, Rick, to try to address that, and if there are other issues, we could try to address them right now. But I'll, we're in council's hands.
At this point, I think what we can do is we can address that question later, since it's not directly related to the trail itself. Any questions of clarification? Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your deputation, Mr., I'm sorry, what was your last?
Ivanoff.
Ivanoff, yes. Thank you. I didn't see the deputation request here, so I didn't know that you were making a deputation today. Thanks for your deputation. So you are a, so you're the private owner, or you're the owner of private land that is obviously, understandably, you're inconvenienced by a handful of people, or I don't know how many people, who have been creative and sort of taken shortcuts and used your property. And I can understand you being upset. I'm a property owner myself. Usually, the onus is on the property owner to protect their property. It is not on taxpayers to protect the private owner's property. And in this situation, what you are asking this council to do is to build a pathway that residents who live in the area, you don't live on Tom Taylor Crescent, do you? Right. So people who live on Tom Taylor Crescent, and I have dozens and dozens of signatures, who don't actually want to access the pathway because they don't, they feel they don't need to access, they didn't say they're going to access your property. But again, I, I'm just asking you, do you, do you think that it's fair that, that you should not protect your property like everybody else is obliged to do? You said, you mentioned in your deputation that you are, you were trying to work with the landowner, and you didn't get a response, but again, I don't see how that, that onus is on council, that you didn't get that response.
Actually, we had a very good meeting with the supervisor, the property supervisor of the development to our west, and we've had good relationships. I mean, people come over the fence, we talk to them, and we ask them, why is it that you need to come over the fence or go through the fence sometimes? And they feel it's quite a distance for them to travel otherwise. The fairness question, though, I think directly is, and can be answered by the fact that when that property went in, was developed, the trail was planned. So that those homeowners, my understanding from discussions we've had over a number of years with the developer, was that each of those residences should have been notified somewhere on title that something was going on behind them. So it comes to a bit of surprise that there's that claim that they weren't informed, because our understanding was there was always a trail or a roadway, in fact, planned behind that, those residences.
Okay, so I'm going to challenge you on that. But before I do, I wanted to, so you're saying that it was planned because of, because of...
Because the access to Young Street, north and south, is such a great distance from that location.
Well, there's a lot of places in Newmarket where access to major corridors like Young Street are an issue, but I want to challenge you, Mr. Ivanoff, because I actually sat down with Commissioner Robert Prentice, who's no longer with us, in his office last year, and I discussed this at length with him. He did tell me, it's in my notes, he did tell me that this was based on not a plan, or as you say, it was actually based on your complaint. And this, you're right, it was, it was about two years ago, but it was based on your complaint. Now, here's the thing, I couldn't find, we did some research, I couldn't find any plans that you're talking about. I couldn't find it in, in our, in our council. I was looking, we were looking, couldn't find anything in the, in the developers' blueprints, couldn't find anything from the town. So this, if this was a conversation between a few administratives, I'd be concerned about that. And I haven't seen that paperwork. So it's your word against mine, I guess.
Well, and I don't think we can ask Mr. Ivanoff to speak for the records of this municipality. So, so what I'd like to do is to receive this deputation if we could, and then if there's some motions coming out of that. Mr. Kerwin is there, and I have Mr. Shelton. Mr. Shelton, did you want to clarify?
Well, I was just going to say again, Mr. Mayor, that, that I think council would benefit from a staff report on this. There's a lot of background information being referred to that could be cleared up by way of a staff report, so I would recommend that, that you do refer this to staff for a staff report.
Thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Mr. Shelton has answered my question.
Okay, thank you. Final questions then? Counselor DiMuccio of the deputant, and we can go forward with other...
No questions of the deputant, sorry. I was going to put the motion forward.
Motion to receive then, please?
All, all.
Counselor Emanuel, Counselor DiMuccio, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, well, the first motion I need to put through is first to, I need two-thirds consent of council to review the 2014 project in our capital budget for the town, for the Tom Taylor Crescent pathway. If we can retable that, that, I would first need to put that forward.
Need a second or for that?
I don't think you require it, but I'll second it.
Well, I was told by the, by the clerk's office.
Sorry, Counsel, Counsel Emanuel?
I'll second it, but I don't think it's required. I think we're far enough past the date that you don't require it.
Mr. Mayor, yes, if I can clarify, the, from what I understand, is the date of, the timeframe has certainly surpassed for the, so it's just a straight motion.
Oh, okay. If I could, if I could say that I was told by the clerk's office, I spoke to you, you told me that I had to do it.
And I apologize for the conclusion.
That's okay.
Thank you. So that's moved in second. Counselor DiMuccio in favor of the, as the mover of the...
No, we don't need to do that. So, so, yeah, so the motion that I'm, we don't need to do that anymore, according to the clerk. So the motion, I'm now putting my motion, the motion that I have intentions, I'm asking council to end the construction project for the Tom Taylor Crescent pathway immediately.
Well, wasn't that the motion that was seconded?
No, that, the motion that was...
All right, fine. Thank you. So there's a motion, is there a second or for, for this motion? Counselor Emanuel, clarification?
Yeah, because I'll second it, because I don't think it needs to move forward. I would like a second part to be added. So obviously, there's some things that need to be clarified. The ownership, I've got questions about whether commitments were made between properties, et cetera. So I think absolutely we should stop construction for the 2014 year. The B should be that the staff report back at the earliest opportunity on analysis or the needs, a needs analysis of connectivity, and that would be a B portion.
So you're seconding that on an amended basis, and I would have to ask Counsel DiMuccio as to whether or not she sees that as a friendly amendment?
I do not see that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so then you are in want of a second or then?
If it fails, I'll move that motion.
Okay, in the absence of a second or?
I'd like to give a try.
You want to second that motion?
Well, I'll second the motion if the mover is amenable to an additional, an additional recommendation which, I haven't said anything yet. An additional recommendation which states that staff bring back a report exploring options for alternative treatments.
Counselor DiMuccio, is that a friendly amendment?
So just to, just to clarify, so, Mr. Taylor, are you saying that you will support my motion, but in addition, ask staff to review additional options for that area in terms of accessibility, but will not have an impact on the Tom Taylor? I just want to make sure that the residents there are aware that that pathway will not be going in that, in that...
Was that, was that the intent?
Is that the intention? I just...
My intent was what, what was stated and to add what I added, which was to support the cessation of any moving forward on the project, and to get a report back that looks at options for treatment in that area. What that report tells us at that time, I can't say, so I don't know fully what it means, but, but I'm, I'm fully supportive of stopping the project and looking at alternate options for treatment for the area.
So, Counsel, do you see that as a friendly amendment?
Well, again, Mr. Mayor, I need to, there's a lot of work that has been gone, going on with the residents, and I need to make sure that when they leave here today, they understand what they're getting. So, again, I will ask Mr. Taylor to clarify his position. The first section of the motion is to end and cease the project of putting a pathway behind the homes of 260 and 294 Tom Taylor Crescent. Does he support that? And number two, the option of finding alternative options, I would absolutely support, but I need to make sure that that alternative option, after staff comes back with a report, is not once again to suggest a pathway behind the homes of 260 to 294 Tom Taylor Crescent.
Well, I guess I wouldn't want to rush the process. I would want to take the appropriate time and get the information. So I think, and to be fair to all of council, perhaps doesn't know this topic as well as you, I think, I would, I think it'd be wiser of all of us to simply halt the project and get all of the possible treatments, which may include some other form of trail in a different location, partial, I don't know, but hopefully it would also include things like turning it into natural state, conveying the property. We can look at all of those and, and discuss how we can move that forward. But in general, I support... But in general, I support not seeing the trail go here and looking at other options. But I don't think we should rush to saying 100 percent, nothing else. And I think it's a lot to ask of your colleagues and ask of other people from the community that are here. And I don't see the rush. This is a big step forward in the right direction, so I think we should try to move in that direction.
So your intent to have?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Let me clarify.
Sorry.
So your intent to have the walkway absolutely excluded from the consideration, I don't believe is what the regional councilor is agreeing to. So the question is back to you, do you see that as a friendly amendment without that requirement?
Well, Mr. Mayor, is that coming from you or the regional councilor? Because you just spoke for him. Is that what his intention was?
I think we all heard what the regional councilor had to say.
I didn't hear that. I'm hearing a deferral, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, well, then let's have Mr. Taylor repeat himself.
But I'm in the queue. I'm hearing a deferral, is what I'm hearing.
Would you like me to clarify or not?
That's what you're --
That's what I'm just going to ask him.
Here's what I'm understanding from you, John.
So you don't want to clarify?
You're saying, basically, essentially, let's defer this, let's stop it now, but you're saying, let's defer it until we get a staff report, which may or may not say we continue to support the pathway behind those homes.
Thank you, thank you.
That's not what my intention was.
Mr. Taylor, is that what you said?
Not entirely.
Okay, so let's clarify that.
I'm trying to have an open dialogue here and get to a solution, so I hope you are too, Councilor DiMuccio. What I'm saying is, and I'll be as blunt and clear as I can, just because I want it to be straight up there, I am not saying and agreeing that the first phrase means that this will never happen 100 percent. Although, I would like us to go further than just having a staff report back to talk about whether it's justified. What I'm asking for is a staff report back that will include other alternative treatments other than a trail, so we can look at those and say, okay, we've got some options in front of us. We can look at turning it back into a natural state, treeing it, conveying it to the property owners, and allowing the rest of council and other people in the public the option to hear more about the original option. And I think that that's a step forward for the residents that will pass, and I think you should be looking for a solution for the residents. That's what I'm suggesting bluntly.
Okay, and Regional Counselor John Taylor, you just, I'm going to repeat what you just said. No, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, this is a motion, we're discussing it. Are you saying that I can't discuss my own motion?
I'm asking you to confirm as to whether or not the amendment is friendly.
And I'm telling you why the amendment is not friendly. I'm going to explain to you.
Okay, all right, therefore, therefore, Counselor, you have --
Can you let me explain, in a democratic council?
You do not have a second or for your motion. You do not have a second or for your motion?
We're talking about clarification here, Mr. Mayor.
We did clarify.
No, I did not. I want to repeat John, Mr. Taylor's words.
Order. I call you to order. You do not have a second or for your motion, because the regional councilor did not agree to have the, this trail excluded fully. So it is my ruling that you do not have a second or for your motion. I will ask you to find another second or for your motion.
I'm sorry, I don't have a second or for my first motion? I do have a second or, I believe that I had a second or?
No, that was withdrawn as well.
So now?
No, you did not accept the first, the first second.
Mr. Mayor?
You did not accept the second second.
Are we having a democratic discussion here? I'm sorry, but I represent --
Yes, we are, yes, we are, Counselor.
Okay, so I represent my ward, and when I represent my ward, I argue on their behalf.
That's correct.
You can cut me off, as you've done many times.
Sorry, sorry.
But I'm here because I'm representing --
Order, Counselor, order, please. We're trying to find a solution.
Exactly.
And arguing is not a solution.
I'm not arguing, Mr. Mayor.
I'm asking you if you would seek a second or for your motion. And in the absence of that, your motion will fail.
Mr. Mayor, can you please explain to me why you will not allow me to clarify Mr. Taylor's comments?
It's been clarified.
No, it hasn't.
That is my ruling.
I have a question.
That is my ruling.
Okay, I have a point of order. I have a point of order.
Talk to your point of order, please.
Okay, my point of order is, Mr. John Taylor just said that one of the options was conveying that land to the landowners, to the residents of Tom Taylor Trail. If he wants to do that, then why are we putting a pathway there? Does that make any sense?
This is not speaking to the point of order. This is not speaking to the point of order.
Doesn't matter, Mr. Mayor, I caught him on something, he said that.
The point of order is, Counselor? The point of order is that there was a request for a second or. There was a conditional second or. You have, did not accept either one of those two seconders. You are in the absence of a second or. I will ask one more time if there is a second or for this motion, and in the absence of that, your motion fails. Is there a second or for that motion? In the absence of that, your motion fails. Regional Counselor?
I'll put forward a motion that we halt any work on a trail in the vicinity described, and that staff bring back a report looking at all options for treatments of that land, including other options such as naturalization or conveyance. And that that be brought back as soon as possible for council's consideration.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Sponga. You wish to speak to that, Regional Counselor?
Yes, I would. I represent the residents in this ward as well, as does the mayor. We have three representatives, and I see my job as trying to find solutions. And sometimes that means moving things forward slowly, sometimes that means looking at alternative approaches, but trying to get to a place where everybody can be satisfied. I don't, I find that to be much more effective than taking stands. And anyway, I'll leave it at that. I think we've got a grounds to work forward with, we've got some information that will bring us forward on numerous options. I think at least two of them I mentioned would be very satisfactory to the residents and will have a chance to explore that and move forward at another time.
Thank you. Counselor Sponga is the second or?
I would, as it was said around this table, I'm not familiar with the issue, with the item, and so I would need to have more information on the item. I'm willing to do that, to move forward, and I think it's important that we get holistic perspective on the issue. I will caution, though, that I have been through this road with the residents of Curry Armitage, where they actually had their walkway go through a condominium, and we withheld, we supported that decision, because we are a community that promotes accessibility, that promotes walking, and et cetera. So I'm willing to get more information. I think it's fair to all, those who do not want the walkway, and those who feel that there's a need to come up with some sort of solution and does it impact their private property. And I think this is the right way to go.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Kirwin?
Couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know to whom to address. I know Peter is new, and Ian has been here a while, and so has Rick. But with this trail system, with any trail, basically, we've always had a public information meeting. Has a public information meeting ever taken place on this piece of land? Or has public consultation ever taken place? I think this is really crucial, because I don't believe that this area has been totally flushed out. Who would know that in the building department? Has this area totally been built up, or are there still houses to be built?
Mr. Knohammer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Kirwin, it's my understanding that as part of the design phase of this project, there was going to be a public information center to be held this fall.
There was going to be?
Yes, and that was --
That's crucial.
And that was intended to provide area residents, including adjacent residents, an opportunity to provide input
Right.
-- into mitigating measures, buffers, design issues, and the like, so that they could be addressed as part of the design.
You see, that is absolutely crucial and essential, and that's what we have always done. And it's unfortunate that that has not taken place, or we might not be here right now. So I'm looking forward to, you know, when you have those public meetings, then all the residents, everyone has the opportunity to have their input. And whether we go forward, or we don't go forward, or what we do, some trails have lights and some don't. But really, the issue here that I've discovered all the way along is, when you try to put something in after houses have been built, you know, when you try to put a lighted sports field into a residential area after the residential area has been built, that's where we run into issues or concerns. So I strongly believe that when we move forward on this, there must be public consultation by all the residents up in that area, and then we can move forward and resolve this issue in a transparent way. But at this point, we need that transparent way.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the public information session is a routine matter that we would do for all of these capital projects, and that was planned to go forward. And it's just, this petition now has preempted that process. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Thank you. Counselor Twinn?
Thank you. I just want to thank Mel for inviting me over to take a look at the area in person, because sometimes pitchers don't give it quite the, you know, don't get quite the feel for it unless you go and have a look. And I certainly do support looking at, and I think the motion that Regional Counselor John Taylor put forward, I think is one that is something that will be beneficial to everybody in the area, including yourselves, looking at what other options are there. Because when I was there, I could see that there could be other options as opposed to just perhaps having a trail there. There's other ways of doing it. So I think this is a way of perhaps bringing those solutions forward, so that we can take a look as a whole and work with you as a community to ensure that it's beneficial for you as well. And I look forward to this report coming back. I think part of it, too, is, you mean, ownership, I'm assuming that we own it or the developer owns it, I'm not too sure. And I think that can be part of the report, which you mentioned, our CEO mentioned, which I think would be beneficial, and what we can do moving forward, that would be, could be even to, I mean, better than what it is now for you. So I look forward to this report coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Emanuel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too had the pleasure of going to look at it, and I can see where the residents' concerns. But I do think process is important, too. And that's why I even raised that day, Melanie, as you'll recall, you know, for instance, if we're going to look at conveyance, which I'm not opposed to, there's also protocols and processes to go through, and we need to see that staff report. Perfect example is, because it's town-owned, you know, we had the lands, Counselor Kirwin will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was on College Manor, where the resident expanded their yard into town-owned lands, and there was a compensation process, because if you're going to convey lands, you have to deal with, there has to be a process on adjudicating value, et cetera. So my question is, this report is just brings us that information, whether it be conveyance left as is or what, but we need those answers to make that decision. So it, for me, it was important to immediately stop proceeding, but let's get that information. Hopefully, it comes either at the next committee of the whole or one shortly thereafter, and I think residents can get some clarity and be heard as well. So, thank you, and thank you to the Regional Counselor for putting forward the motion.
Thank you. Counselor DiMuccio?
Thank you. I certainly agree with Counselor Kirwin's comments. Very well said. I will support the motion only because I know that it's, like I said earlier before I was cut off, I do believe this is a deferral, just like we had this discussion a couple years ago about a sidewalk on Bezwick that residents didn't want, and council voted to defer it, but mark my words, in about two years, that sidewalk's going there. So Melanie, and, you know, to all the residents on Tom Taylor Crescent, if I'm not here in this chair in three years, I will be advocating for Tom Taylor Crescent where you're sitting right now. And I believe, and I know this council believes it, too, we believe in a democratic process because we've had many, many petitions come before council, far less than what I saw today, asking us to defer projects or to sort of actually get rid of projects such as sidewalks. There was one on Ward Three in Jackaranda earlier this term. A handful of residents came, project was over. I didn't even have a staff report when that decision was made. So, you know, I hope, I hope that, I certainly support that we look at other ways for the convenience, because let me explain once again, this is not about, this is not an accessible, this is not about accessibility, it's about convenience for a landowner who came here today and said he was inconvenienced by certain trespassers, and I believe that's what this is all about. So let's hope that we do have, you know, we can figure out other solutions, I certainly have some ideas on that. But at the end of the day, you know, if we are back here in a few years, which we will, we will be back here talking about this very same thing. And I think it's important to take a position when you're a member of council on any issue, because that's really what leadership is. It's about taking a position and making sure that you implement that, whether you agree with it or not, whether your other colleagues agree with it or not, it's always about taking positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin, second comments?
Yes, just to wrap up, Mr. Mayor, I'm a great believer in problem solving and solution finding, and over the years, I've seen that happen. The example my colleague Chrissy Emanuel stated with regard to a piece of property on College Manor, and we resolved that, and if you go and have a look at it, it's absolutely a success story. The second one, we had a public meeting with the extension of the Dave Kirwin Trail into East Gwillingberry, and the residents of East Gwillingberry found that the trail was too close to their property, and that we came up with an amenable solution that worked with everyone. The trail has been built, it's there, and the residents are absolutely satisfied. The other one is the extension of Lydia Street, which was supposed to go across, parallel to Gorham Street, but dead-ended before it reached Muriel Street. We've, over many years, probably 25 years, we've resolved that issue with the residents, and those residents are picking up that property, and their property will extend back onto the Fairground Fields. So I've been a participant in some very, very successful public consultations and public meetings with many, many different groups, and I think that's really the way that we should be going with this council. So, and thank you, Counselor DiMuccio, for your kind words.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting the recommendation based on the fact that it is solutions-oriented, and I don't think we have enough information to come to any conclusions, and that is what we owe to our taxpayers. So I will be supporting the recommendation. So I'll call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. We have one more deputation, and that is Ms. Phyllis Brady, and that's with respect to Queen's Crescent. Ms. Brady?
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm very nervous. Anyway, I live on Queen's Crescent, and our street has become a free all-day parking lot for visitors and staff to the hospital and South Lake Village Nursing Home. Almost every day, the south side of the street is filled with vehicles. Sometimes it is very difficult to get out of our driveways on both the north and south sides of the street. Some days, we cannot park our own vehicles on the road if we want to do some work on our driveways or have tradespeople come to do work for us. Cars are allowed to park on the south side, but some days, the street is full of cars. And one day, a grass-cutting company, truck and their trailer and their equipment, parked on the north side, then another of these trucks and trailer came by and could barely get through the narrow street. They had to be guided past the wrongfully parked truck and trailer. Another day, one of these companies parked their truck and trailer right across our neighbor's driveway, completely blocking it, because there was no other place to park. They cut one lawn, then left their vehicle there to do another lawn on Queen Street. Our neighbor came home and, of course, couldn't park in his own driveway. This has happened more than once over the summer. We also get driver instruction vehicles. They have the students practice parallel parking with the parked vehicles. One student had the road completely blocked for a couple of minutes, he was angled right across the road. Some people park their cars over the driveways by two feet or more. If I happen to be outside and see them doing it, I tell them they are wrongfully parked. Sometimes they move, sometimes they don't. I don't want to cause any trouble and think I am helping them out so they won't be ticketed, but some people just don't care. This past winter was almost impossible, some days, to get out of our driveway. Between the snowbanks and the vehicles, it left little room to maneuver out of our of our driveway even if we backed in. Vehicles also park right up, right by the stop sign at the east end of our street, making it dangerous trying to make a turn onto Pleasant View Avenue. And that street is usually full of parked cars too. There have been times when people park in front of the hot fire hydrant on Queen's Crescent also. Whether they see it or not, who knows? When the hospice is built on Queen Street, Queen's Crescent and Pleasant View will likely be parking lots 24/7. I don't know how many spots the hospital, hospice will have or if they will charge for parking, but I think our street has been victimized enough by the high parking rates at the hospital. There is no parking allowed on both sides of Grace Street, just east of the hospital, and no parking on Queen Street until closer to Alexander Road. Roxborough Road has no parking between Davis Drive and Queen Street, so cars are parked south of Queen on Roxborough. At least they don't park near the four-way stop signs. If the garbage men can't get to the blue bins or garbage cans because of vehicles parked over driveways, they won't pick up our garbage, which I can't blame them. If there was a fire or some other emergency on our street, I doubt the emergency vehicles would be able to get to the victims very easily. There are small children living on our street now. If one happened to wander onto the road, it would be very difficult for a modus to see them with all the cars parked on the sidewalk side of the street. There have also been vehicles parked overnight. The bylaws officer has been coming around more often, but it's not enough. We would appreciate the town passing a bylaw, excuse me, designating no parking along all of Queen's Crescent, or at least no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 or 5:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions or clarification? Counselor Kirwin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank Phyllis and the residents of Queen's Crescent for bringing this forward to council. It's not easy for people to come to speak before council, and Phyllis was a bit nervous, and you've done a marvelous job. What we're looking at here, Mr. Mayor, is really what I call in military terms, preemptive strike. Let's solve some of the problems before they, they become magnified with the construction of the hospice on Queen Street. This has been an ongoing concern of people parking on Queen's Crescent, Pleasant View, Wesley and Crescent Street. So I really would like to thank the input of our, our director, Rachel Prudum. I've sat in her office and with Mark Krasznowski, who's a, a traffic consultant, with regard to the entire area. And it's happening because people want to find a free place to park. And I, quite frankly, I don't blame them. I would too. But I've been out there monitoring it and, and the condition is precisely what Phyllis has said. At times, people park, we have a three-hour parking limit, but these cars are parked here longer than that and our parking enforcement is, has been out there. But I think we're going to have to monitor that situation more carefully. But I would like to move to receive the deputation and then I'd like to recommend a solution to this area, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second to receive the deputation?
I'll say.
Counselor Twinney? Okay, thank you.
And, and to bring it forward.
Okay. I have another speaker, Counsel Twinney wishes...
No, no, I just, it's just...
Oh, you're seconding it? Okay. All right. Good. Okay. All those in favor of receiving the deputation? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Kirwin?
Yes, I'd like to bring forward a, a recommendation, and this was in, in consultation with our traffic engineer, Mark Krasznowski, and our director, Rachel Prudum. Number one, that we send this to our staff for a report on the entire area. And that would be, you see, there is part of Queen's Crescent that does have a no parking sign up there. And I think we have to look at not only Queen's Crescent, but also Pleasant View, Wesley and, and Crescent Street. Because if we put a no parking there, we just push it around. So we need to do the entire area, Mr. Mayor, so we don't exacerbate the situation. That's, that's one recommendation. Number two is, and the director can help me phrase this, I think that once we have that report, what we should be looking at is when residents in that area have visitors, that they be issued parking permits for those residents so they can park on those streets. And Phyllis Brady mentioned some recommendations herself, like from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., that could be there. Is it from Monday to Friday or Monday to right through to Sunday? That's something we, we have to look at, sort of five days a week, seven days a week. I think we have to look at the timing. And I think we have to look at, once we establish that, and I know other areas, and Rachel was talking to me about them, and there can be problems, but sometimes it can be a solution. And that is that the residents of the area have a, a pass to allow people to park.
Counselor, could I get a second for your motion?
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay. Counselor Twinney?
So I'm referring it back to staff to look at a combination of, of the issue, Mr. Mayor. And sooner is better, but also we will be anticipating the hospice being built by the end of 2016. It is going to move ahead. The sign is up there. I'm so happy about that. And, but this is a forward-looking vision. Rachel, could you make a comment, please?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Prudum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, regarding the parking permits, I think that the wording should rather be that we explore the possibility of having permits in the community. And that would likely be done through the bylaws department. Because we, I don't believe that we have a full handle on permit parking at this time.
Well, I would like to add that, Ms. Mayor, that at least we explore it, and if it is through the Commissioner Anita Moore's department, that she's here and she's heard that recommendation. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor, with the added advice of our director.
Thank you. Counselor Twinney is a second.
Yes, I just want to actually add on to this, and thank you, Phyllis, for coming forward because my ward is basically right across the street from Mr. Kirwin's ward, Counsel Kirwin's ward. And similar, and we've talked many times, myself and our, our director, Rachel, about some of the issues I'm having, same kind of idea. So I'm just wondering, I know you talked about it, Rachel, a little bit about maybe having an overall strategy for the whole hospital area, whether it's, you know, I mean, towing air zones, like, just different things, because, you know, I mean, it's not, things aren't working in my area as well, and it's because of the hospital again. So I'm hoping that this report is, rather than specifically streets, that we look at this whole area as an, as a problem area and how do we deal with it? Like when you see in the city of Toronto, you'll see that in the hospital areas, there's increase in fines or there's increase in towing. So some of those solutions, as we, especially as now our hospital's so big, that I think that needs to be looked at in a, in a more of a real aggressive manner because it's not working what we're doing in, in certain areas. And when you put no parking, it just pushes it and people still park. And then we have to have bylaws there. And it's just, so there's going to be, I think there's got to be some more solutions, and I'd like to have it all looked at the whole area would be great.
I regard that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor, or friendly suggestion.
I think, yeah, be a comprehensive...
Sort of a direction to that.
Okay.
That's, that's what colleagues do. They work together, Mr. Mayor, because we have the same issues.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Let's, let's take a...
Once again, thank you, and pass it on to Mark.
Thank you. And what we'll do is, it is currently about 22:04, so maybe 4:00?
4:00.
Yeah, let's take a 20-minute break. I don't think construction has started on that path anyway, has it? How can we stop construction that's not started? Who's that?
John.
Oh, so it's a southwest?
Southwest. Main.
Timothy?
Timothy and Church.
And Church. Okay. Thank you.
I don't see.
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 I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see. I don't see.
Okay. What's this? All right, it is four oh four. And I'll call this meeting to order one more time. And I think my batteries have died.
Who is that?
No, Napa Valley.
Napa Valley. Did you give my apology, Mr. Mayor? My bride's villa?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll call the meeting to order once again.
We will be in a minute.
Okay, the next item on the agenda then is item number ten, which is actually being dealt with separately as a result of the declaration, item number ten and ten A. And that is the, with respect to the heritage Newmarket minutes and their recommendations. Can I have a motion with respect to those minutes? And the staff recommendations? Ten A is on you then. Received the report and the recommendation, staff's recommendations. Is there a motion? Regional councillor, second or? Councillor Twain. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. And the record should show that councillor Sponga did not take part in the discussion. Next item is item number thirteen, which is the hospital foundation correspondence. And you may as well put that together with item number thirteen and fourteen together. We have some recommendations. Page seventy-five, seventy-six. The, for item number thirteen, it's the request for the billboard permit and the recommendation is that it be received. And item number fourteen is that there are a number of recommendations. And that the request for the fee waiver would be denied. Could I have a motion with respect to these reports? Moving them? Oh yeah, sorry. Councillor Manuel. Councillor Manuel was in the queue.
I was actually going to move that we refund the associated fees. And that in the next term, council develop a, with a report from staff, a policy on on items such as these, whether it be a hospital or other not-for-profits, et cetera, requests.
Is there a second for that? Councillor Kerwin. Councillor Manuel is speaking to the motion.
Just briefly, I think it would have been helpful if we did have a policy on this. I think council going forward needs to add this. I do see the intrinsic benefit of, I think the language would have to be refund the fees and not waive the fees because that requires separate resolution. But I do think with the jobs, et cetera, and a way of supporting Southlake, who I think is an important community partner, I think it makes sense that we've refunded such fees. I just, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Kerwin is the second. No comments. Councillor Sponga?
Yes, I'd like to hear from staff, Mr. Mayor, if they could expand on the very last, the very last paragraph, budget two, sorry, on report twenty-fourteen dash thirty-eight under budget implications, as noted above. And it refers to a grant option. I'm just wondering if I could get some more clarification on what that means.
Mr. Sheldon?
I'm the commissioner of corporate services to respond to that.
Okay. Madam Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, the the grant, if the fees were handled through a grant, it does keep the department's revenues whole as opposed to not taking into account any of the staff time and whatnot that would take to process the application. So I believe that's why the comment in the report through a grant is made.
For the perfect. Do we have a grant? I'm really interested in this, but I think it'd be a good option. Could you expand a bit and tell me what grant, do we have a grant program that would address this?
Madam Commissioner?
Ian, or Mr. McDougal may respond further on the grant program that we do have. But it's more around recreation-based grants, not with respect to applications such as these. And it's my understanding that staff would be reporting back or as we look to develop this policy, it would include something along grants. That we'd also need to look at funding for that type of, for that type of initiative as well.
Okay, it's also noted that the other option would be for the cost to come out of reserves. What reserves would those be?
I believe the, I believe the report did mention, thank you, the rate stabilization fund.
Thanks.
And the deputy treasurer who's here, because Mr. Mays is away this week, has indicated that there are funds in there. They are generally for one-time events. And I believe at the moment we have over half a million in that account, in that reserve right now.
Thank you. Thanks. I would, Mr. Mayor, propose an amendment. propose an amendment that I hope is friendly and that we take the reserve avenue and that the funds be refunded from that source.
From the rate stabilization fund?
Rather than, yeah, rather than just refund it.
Okay, so it just defines the source. Is that friendly, Councillor Manuel?
It's friendly.
Okay, good. And Councillor Kerwin, do you see that as a friendly? Okay. All right. Okay. No further discussion then? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. And at the same time, yeah, so item number 13 and 14. So we receive the correspondence, but the refund applies to that as well? Two hundred bucks. Okay. Okay, good. The next item then is item number 15. And this relates to fees and charges to signs on Davis Drive. Recommendation here is that the report be received and that the waiver of fees and charges related to the signs on Davis Drive be denied. Regional councillor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion here, actually, that we counsel direct staff to bring a report to council for September 29th, which would either refund or waive all fees for signage on Davis Drive from January 1st, 2014 to December 31st, 2015, with a recommended source of funding. In other words, as a form of a grant through another, through a different source, but and, well, I'll leave it there and then speak.
Okay. A second or then? Councillor Sponga. Okay. As the mover, regional councillor?
Thanks very much. I'll be quick, but I don't think it needs a great deal of explanation to know that the businesses on Davis Drive have been facing a significant amount of challenges in relation to the construction project. And that, while there's been a number of initiatives taken on by VIVA, the region, and and as well the chamber to try to be of assistance, I think that this is something that would show that we, as well as the town, are taking a step to try to be of assistance where we can. I think it's a relatively small gesture, but it's an important one. And it just lets those businesses know that we're trying to work with them and trying to support them. I think this is a very unique circumstance. I don't think this sets a precedent anywhere else, in my opinion, at least at this point. I think this is a very unique circumstance, and I think that signage is important to businesses, particularly businesses that are in a challenging time, such as those on Davis. And I think that this is a very reasonable and a very justified step to take. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Sponga?
I think, as a regional councillor said, I think this is a great opportunity for us to give some additional support to the businesses on Davis. And I would like that report as well, if, I don't know if there's a need for an amendment, but maybe it's just direction to staff, depending on the opinion of the mover. Then maybe we can extend that to Young Street and maybe tie it to the initiation of the construction works project there as well.
Why don't we just have that direction to staff to include that in the report by later in future time?
Right.
Councillor DiMuccio?
Thank you. Actually, Councillor Sponga reflected my own thoughts. I think it's important that it would actually, I believe, set a precedence. And, you know, we know that Young Street is about to face the same issues that Davis Drive is. At the end of the day, however, I'm not going to make a big deal out of this because, you know, cost-wise, it's very minimal. It doesn't really have a huge impact on the budget. The revenue is just over three thousand, is that correct, staff? Just over three thousand?
It's in the report, yes.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, but having said that, though, I still think we need, I mean, I'm a big policy person. I know somebody had mentioned here today about following policy. And I always get a little worried about waiving this and waiving that, just because it does set a precedence. And, you know, we're about to face a lot of construction in the town of Newmarket. So we got to, we got to really make a decision on, you know, standing for something and making sure that it's implemented. Thank you.
Councillor 20?
Just a question of clarification. So that any of the applicants that had already submitted any payments for any signage would just be automatically reimbursed from the town? They'd be notified that we were doing that?
Madam Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I believe that's, that's what will happen, is that those reimbursements will go out to the
Automatic, those, yep.
And, all right. And, Mr. Mayor, while I have the chance, I was just looking in the report. It does say that the fees and charges bylaw needs to be amended at the same time. And because we're not sure whether, of course, council will be doing that, what I'd like to suggest is we will put a notice in the paper, because we're supposed to give notice when we do the fees and charges. Just saying, not saying that we're going to do it, that it may be a consideration. So just so members of council are aware, that you'd probably see that advertised in September.
That's for future consideration. Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. The, to date, there've been 33 applications representing $3,200. So this, but this will be on a go-forward basis as well, so we'll have a, it's hard to say, but there'll be some multiple of that figure. And then we'll have the Young Street to consider as well, obviously as part of this, part of this consideration at the time. And whether staff thinks it's better, whatever direction, to deal with it at once or separately. And I think I'd like to also just phrase it that approximately the dates offered, if there's a way that you, that staff feels is better to handle the dates, I'm open to that, or I think council's open to that, I just, so I think I'll phrase the motion for now from approximately, or maybe between the approximate dates of at staff's discretion, and you can sort of try to adjudicate the best you can, what's the best way to handle that? Because I, because I think if what I'm hearing is you need to move fairly rapidly on public notification, you're going to need some leeway on, you don't want to come back to council because you thought, well, actually, we should do something slightly different. So I'm just trying to provide that latitude.
Take that as a direction, staff? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Item number 17 is an always-stop on King's Mayor. Mr. Shelton?
Just confirm that that is the same funding source that we talked about.
Rate stabilization?
Yeah. I think we didn't specify that, but just so that is confirmed.
Okay.
As direction would be fine on that.
Okay. Another thing I was just thinking that it's possible that we have businesses that face Davis Drive but don't necessarily have that address. So the intent would be the businesses that are impacted by facing Davis Drive? Is that, do we need, is that the intent as well? Are we able to do that?
Yeah, I guess, again, I think if it's assumed that the phrasing, sorry. If it's assumed that the phrase in the motion, both in date and effective businesses are, that it's latitude for staff to craft the appropriate bylaw, that reflects the intention. I think that's enough. I can't exactly say what that means, but I think staff will have a better sense when they look into it and try to keep things moving.
That's good. Thank you. All right, item number 17. Oh, Councillor Sponga, this is on the
Than frontaging, and I think that the reason of fronting on Davis Drive, I think the regional councillor captured, however, I think it's more businesses in general that have access through Davis Drive. And the other thing is, in terms of where that source is, I would expect that it would be part of the recommendations from staff, the most appropriate source.
Okay, thank you. Now, back to item number 17. Councillor Vay?
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask council to defer this item and that we go back and do a second measurement of traffic. And the reason for that, that we're going to ask to do this, if we look at our, our own transportation management policy from October 2009, the most recent one we have, we didn't exactly measure the traffic in the correct way, in this case, at the corner and the activity happening at at King's Mayor and at Tare. And the main reason for that, and I have spoken to the staff about it, is that the times that we did the traffic counts were actually not correct, that we should have been doing them. And if I'm looking at, from our own report, page 12 or 14, C12, right-of-way control, it does say that consideration must be given to nearby schools and the afternoon count to be adjusted to two in the afternoon to five in the afternoon. So it's just a slightly different time. This was brought forward at a request for a three-way stop by the residents and really did have to do with the nearby school. I have spoken to Rachel about this, and I believe Peter has been brought to your attention also. I'd just like to hear from staff if there are any objections to deferring this to September and redoing the count as per our policy.
Now, do we, do we have a second for that? Okay, second by regional councillor. Okay, Mr. Nohammer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we have no objection to the councillor's motion.
Any further discussion then? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Next item then, I believe, is item number 20, solar panels. The recommendations are to go forward with the photovoltaic panels under the FIT program for the Magna Centre. Could I have a motion with respect to the? Regional councillor moved, seconded? Councillor Manuel? Regional councillor, speaking to the motion?
Just again, I think we're taking, taking, taking advantage of an existing program that's provided to all municipalities and glad that we're, that we're looking for all forms of revenue within our, within our organization, within the community to benefit our residents. Again, we'll see a substantial payback over time, although modest in the early years, but growing significantly in the outer years. And this will add to the work we've already done in this area. Again, I think, to keep it short, the future for municipalities is looking for alternate sources of revenue. We've done that in many ways through naming rights and other kinds of things, and I think we've led in this area. And I think this will put us in very good stead into the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. As a second, councillor Manuel?
Briefly, you know, frankly, this is all really summed up in the one paragraph on the business plan and strategic plan linkages, where it clearly identifies that over the 20-year period, we'll be yielding about $4 million, $4.1 million with a cost of $1.5. As the regional councillor said, you know, this day and age, we try to look to the taxpayer as little as possible on the tax, property tax bill and recognize that this is paid. FIT program is subsidized by the province, but anytime we can reduce the amount of burden on our property taxpayer, we should be. And this is, couldn't be a clear indication, you know, a clear win for the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor DiMuccio?
Thank you. I think, in principle, I think it's a great idea. We have, you know, there's no doubt that the investment is saving money on our energy bills. However, the reality is, I need to oppose this to be consistent with my, with my belief on the FIT program. The reality is, FIT has caused our hydro rates to skyrocket enormously. And the program is something that I've always been opposed to. At the end of the day, are we, are we saving any money? Well, as long as FIT is there, and I've been on record for opposing FIT, as long as we have FIT, we are going to have enormous hydro rates. So at the end of the day, we're always going to be paying, it's a bit, you know, it's sort of a circle. We're paying to, to implement this program through enormous hydro rates. But at the end of the day, you know, in order to get a lower rate on, on energy with green solar panels, but at the end of the day, it's going to cost us, it's going to cost us money. And so I oppose it fundamentally, but I do, I do believe that staff was on the right, right call for this. And, you know, there are limitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional councillor?
Yeah, I just, I do want to make a comment about that. And I think, you know, regardless of the various positions on FIT out there across the province, and there's many of them in many organizations, many individuals, at the end of the day, it exists, and communities all across Ontario are taking advantage of this. And this is one of the recent ones for us to save our taxpayers $2.5 million. And it's, I just, I could, I think I, we have to pursue that opportunity on behalf of the residents, as hundreds of other municipalities are as well. And, you know, the jury, I guess, is out and will hear more, more about the FIT program in the future. But I think, I see my role here at this table as dealing with the reality on the ground and protecting our taxpayers. If this was all existing within just Newmarket and Newmarket Hydro, and one was subsidizing the other, that would be an entirely different story. But, but that isn't the case. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll be supporting the recommendations, as your report is self-explanatory, and it's going to benefit our community. All those in favor? Opposed? That still carries. I think that covers the public agenda, doesn't it? I also want to clarify that, before we go into the private session, that item number 21, no, item number 21 is, is an action item that's following the, that's following the public meeting, correct?
That's just the public meeting.
That's the public meeting component? 21B is what I was, yeah, that's what I was referring to. Okay, 21B then has been passed under consent, and we may be required to ratify item 21B at a special council meeting later this evening. We'll have staff take a look at that and what the process might be for that. But just, just so that everybody is aware of. Okay. Action items. Correspondence and petitions have been dealt with. Reports by regional representatives?
No, I didn't keep them up there.
Okay. Notices of motion? Councillor Sponga?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be bringing forth the next council meeting a motion requesting a report on the full GO train, oh, sorry, a report on GO train operation as it relates to east-west world connections, grade separation, speed within the downtown core, frequency of train, and frequency of whistles.
Okay. Thank you.
It's going to be a big motion.
Any motions? New business? Councillor DiMuccio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I actually just spoke to staff about this. I got a phone call, this is actually directed to Call and Service. I got a phone call from a resident about, you know, a park that was being, you know, just renewed. We have a lot of old infrastructure and we're renewing all that around Newmarket, and I think that's great. It's wonderful. Nice to see our tax dollars go towards our, you know, refreshing our parks. But what I've noticed is lately, and I've gotten a lot of this feedback, even just driving around and seeing parks, and also knocking on doors and seeing it for myself, is that a lot of the part, that we're replacing it with equipment that, in my opinion, is just so standard. And, and, and what I've actually heard is people, a lot of the kids, they don't have swings anymore. What happened to our swings? We're putting, you know, little standard boring climbing things, and, you know, we've got these great big parks. And so I, I'm just concerned, you know, I, I want to know why we cannot invest more. And I really don't know the background behind this, why we can't invest more on play equipment that is really great for kids. So that's, I just wanted to know what.
Mr. Service?
Thank you. Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor DiMuccio. I'm actually going to look over here, because parks, parks maintenance and replacement of parks equipment actually is done within the Public Works Department. So I don't know that I'm actually the best person to provide a good answer to that. Sorry.
Fair enough. I know I sprung this on you, so.
Mr. McDougal then, or?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before, perhaps Colin can comment on this, and then perhaps Mr. Nohammer may have potentially some comments, although it's difficult to, probably for him at this time. But perhaps, Colin, you can speak to the recreation playbook process and some of the things that could evolve out of that, which could influence the design process that is coordinated through the Parks area.
Mr. Service?
Thank you. And actually, that was a nice segue which came to my head after I made my last comment, so thank you. Through the recreation playbook, we are actively engaged with the community in hearing feedback. And certainly, that feedback that you're portraying right now, or that you're sharing with us right now, is consistent with feedback that we're hearing. And that I, as a, as a parent and this community, share as well. So that will influence planning processes moving forward and how we, how we assign capital budgets for budgets for that, for equipment moving forward. And I don't know if there's anything else that you can add to that?
Mr. Nohammer?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, I guess, just in answer to Counselor DiMuccio's questions, I'm not entirely sure what the matter is. I will try and understand it better, but, you know, I guess, suffice to say that, you know, with any playground equipment, there has to be a strong connection between the good design and how it's maintained, and, you know, work to try and resolve the issues that you're bringing forward, once I know more about them.
Okay, and that's great. I'm glad to hear that that's feedback you got, because, you know, I have kids, but I guess it's coming from not just phone calls that have been made to me, but also an email from staff, I think it was last week from Mark, I think, who I know is in charge of all this. And he kindly, you know, gave me the heads up that one of the parks, I believe it's off of Foxtail, was going to be renewed with standardized equipment. So I'm just wondering, is this an initiative that is going into the future, or if we know that feedback exists right now, why are we not implementing that in our current, you know, in our current, you know, the way we... Well, this particular project, it was told, I was told that it's just standard equipment. Is that, so is it something that you're thinking about in the future, or?
Mr. Shelton?
Mr. Mayor, would it help the council member and other members of council if we set out the process for determining what goes in, and where we are in that process, and what's going to influence the future process in terms of that selection for what goes into the different neighborhoods, and get that out to council members, and take into account your comments about, you know, where do we stop and start on this, and we have the playbook exercise underway at this point in time. So I think in fairness to Peter Again, he's done very well for his first meeting, to give him the opportunity to take a look at that and report back to you.
Good suggestion. Thank you. Counselor Spanga?
One item of new businesses, Mr. Mayor, I have moved an notice of motion for council, but it was brought to my attention by several residents now in the downtown that with the frequency of trains increasing, there are some trains that are scheduled earlier than 6 o'clock, and they're somewhere between a quarter after 5 and 5:30 that are now coming through town, and they're blowing the whistle on a regular basis. And their opinion is that this is, and it goes against our whistleblowing bylaw, and the recommendations, I guess, or, sorry, not recommendations, but guidelines, by the Ministry of the Environment. So I was just wondering if we could, if I could get an information report back from staff, as whether that train, and the particular blowing of that whistle during those hours is in contravention of the bylaw, and so whether we can correspond with GO to try and address that. I think the problem is a more holistic problem with all-day traffic. I think it's fantastic to have, but I think we're going to have to deal with what those impacts are going to be, and I look forward to that, and a more holistic report from staff, and perhaps under the new council. But at this point, I think the issue of 5 to 6 o'clock whistles is something that several residents within the downtown core have asked me to address. Thank you.
So staff will review that?
Staff will review that, and I'm happy to get an information report.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Counselor DiMuccio has said, I've had a lot of feedback on the designs of our playground equipment, particularly at College Manor and Dudo Park. The neighbors are really quite upset with the type of playground equipment that has gone in there. It's not innovative, it's not creative, and I've asked Mark Aniuleto to reply, I fast-forward to him the complaints, and sometimes he, I hope he starts to reply to them. I don't know why we've put in this lack of innovative playground equipment. So I walked up to WoodSpring, the labyrinth park up there, with my wife last night, and that's a beautiful park, and Mr. Emanuel, you should be congratulated, and the neighborhood up there maintains it, but it's a creative playground park that teach young kids have imagination. And we've taken that type of thing out of Ferry Lake, out of College Manor, and out of Dudo, and I had no input into it. That's what concerns me. It just happened. Fine, I know it's going to be renovated, but I want to know, is there a reason why we can't have creative, innovative playground equipment for children? And I'm looking forward to this report. Is there a standardized playground equipment that we must put in under an act, that this type of equipment has to go in there? Because the playground equipment that's there now, at those three parks, is bland, to say the least, and residents are really disappointed. And I want to know why, and I think members of council should be consulted. If it's an act by the province, that that type of playground equipment goes in, then all of us should know that. And I'm not, I haven't been informed, and I need to be informed, as Counselor DiMuccio does, because when you go out into the community, you get this feedback, or you sit on the bench, and you watch parents, and I've done this, I did it at all the parks. As I say, last night I went over to WoodSpring, and the parents love that. That is really what a playground should be, and I love playgrounds. I go to them all over the world. So please, give us some information about why you're doing this. Is it by law, or by the Playground Act, or whatever, so we can respond to our residents?
Mr. Service?
Yeah, I think we are getting a report, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Kerwin. The only legislation that we're bound by would be Technical Safety and Standards Authority, TSSA legislation, which doesn't, which focuses on safety as opposed to creativity or use of standard equipment. So as long as the equipment itself complies with safety standards, then it would be acceptable. What, further to the last point, I think what the recreation playbook will focus on, and what we'll look for as a key recommendation out of it, is a process moving forward for engaging both ward counselors and the community in involvement in what, how to replace equipment within parks.
Thank you. Thank you. Regional Counselor?
Thanks, just, yeah, but on the topic, but briefly, I just want to say that I don't disagree with the comments made by any of the counselors about thinking about the kind of equipment we use, and what the public is asking for, and a process of maybe having the public more engaged in the planning, et cetera, but I do want to say this, I think it's important to say, and I'm saying this with all sincerity, I have never had more comments, positive comments, about our parks, and the renewal of our parks, and the expansion of our parks than I have in the last year or two. I'm getting a ton of positive comments. I think all the, what's being said about how we can do it differently, or a bit better, engage the community, absolutely true, but also, I think on the other side of the coin, I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback.
Thank you. Okay, it's appropriate now that we go into the closed session, and I would appreciate receiving a motion that we go into a closed session to deal with items outlined on your agenda for the Counselor Spanga, and seconded by Counselor Emanuel. The items to be discussed are matters before administrative tribunals, the other item is personnel matter about identifiable individuals, there's a proposed land acquisition by the municipality in Ward 7. Sorry.
If it helps, Mr. Mayor...
Oh, that's been removed.
There are two items that were removed. The item listed is number two, and number three.
Okay, because number two has been dealt with my consent?
And number three was removed from the agenda.
I stand corrected, thank you. So the item number four is proposed land acquisition by the municipality in Ward 5, and item number five is potential acquisition property in Ward 5 as well. All of these matters fit within the guidelines of closed meeting discussions. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. That is Kerry.
I'm going to turn off the... Yeah, see if you can do that. Just give it a minute.
Okay, members of council, I'd like to call this committee of the whole to order. And remaining items on the agenda are items number 21A and B, and it's relative to a public meeting for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment. Madam Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this committee of the whole meeting. The Planning Act requires the town to hold at least one public meeting on any proposed Town of Newmarket zoning bylaw amendment. The purpose of this public meeting is to hear from anyone who has an interest in the application for a zoning bylaw amendment at 212 Davis Drive to permit a 15-story apartment building containing 225 units. The committee of the whole will not be making a decision regarding the proposed application tonight, but will refer all written and verbal comments to planning staff to consider in a report that will be brought forward to a future committee of the whole or council meeting. If you wish to be notified of subsequent meetings, or if you are making a presentation today, please complete a form with your name and address and submit it to the clerk's staff. Please note that in accordance with the Planning Act, the Ontario Municipal Board may dismiss an appeal without holding a hearing if the appellant failed to make either oral submissions at the public meeting or provide written submissions to council prior to the adoption. We thank you for your participation and interest in this meeting.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proposal and an outline of the proposed rental apartment building. I'll call on Daniel Burholz to provide us with an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and the public that are here today. My name is Brad Rogers from Groundswell Urban Planners, and I'm here with Dan Burholz from Greenham Rose. And we'd like to take you through a brief presentation with respect to the components of this application that we have before you this evening. So with respect to the location, I think we all are familiar with the location, 212 Davis Drive. The purpose of this slide here is to show the context and to, as far as where it is. You will see a lot of similar shaped properties and buildings to the east of 212 Davis Drive. And there's a church immediately to the east of the property. And we're also showing the proximity to Young Street here. This is a zoomed-in version showing the property as it exists today. It's long and rectangular in shape. And I'm sure everyone is aware of the Parkside Drive and how Parkside Drive was reconfigured, the old location for Parkside Drive, is right here. So with respect to this application, we submitted the zoning bylaw application in April of 2014. There were numerous studies that you can see, I won't list them all. The reason why we needed a zoning application was for three reasons. It had to do with building height, the FSI that was previously approved, and the third reason was a front yard setback because we couldn't bring the building too close to the street because of the conservation issue. So as far as the timeline for this application, just for the public here, we did have a PIC meeting with the Newmarket Heights Community Association, and over 1,000 invitations were hand-delivered by that association. That meeting took place on June 9th in the church, and I know the mayor and some members of council, Mr. Taylor, were also there, and John spoke at that meeting as well about rental. The next step in the planning process would be, our goal would be to get to, back to this council near the end of September so that council could make a decision on the zoning bylaw application. And our goal is to start construction by the end of 2014 or very early in 2015. So I just wanted to make that clear for members of council and the public. So this is what the building looks like, and the site itself is 2.4 acres in size. The proposed building is 15 stories high, and it will house 225 rental apartment units. About 32% of all of the units are one-bedroom, 36% are one-bedroom plus a den, and 32% of the units are two-bedrooms. And those units will range in size from 500 square feet to 900 square feet. Some of the private amenities within the building for the residents include site suite laundry and dishwashers, air conditioning in each unit, an outdoor patio, a party room and a lounge, a fitness gym, bicycle storage and lockers for everyone, and there will all be an onsite mail and package storage area. And this building will be professionally managed with a real focus on consumer needs. The next slide that I wanted to show everyone essentially is the site plan. And the, just to orient everyone, Davis Drive is here on the right, and the right-in, right-out access from Davis Drive will be shared in this area with the church. The building itself is located right here, so there is a drop-off pickup area, and there is parking. All of the parking is here, and there is a one-story parking deck, and I'll talk more about parking on the next slide. About 40% of the site will be landscaped, and as well, we will have a three-meter landscape buffer on both the west side and the east side. The front of the property has been designed in this area to permit the water to flow. There's a creek that runs through here now, so the building's been pushed back. And the location of the building was based on the requirements of the Conservation Authority. The, one thing I will point out is that the Town of Newmarket is proposing an east-west road in this area right here, and we have provided for that by shifting the parking deck back away from the residents on Parkside. This is the parking deck slide, and just to talk about park for a minute, there's 100 stalls of parking on each deck, and so there's two, both an on-ground parking and a P1 parking. And so in total, what we're looking at is about 221 parking spaces. So there's some parking spaces close to the building, plus two floors in a parking deck, very similar to the building to the east of us. So there's no underground parking proposed, I just wanted to make that clear. The next slide is kind of what the streetscape plan and what the site will look like from Davis Drive. So the general massing of the building and exterior facades of the building will fit into the planned context for Davis Drive. The development will have a front facade and with windows and entrances, and an outdoor patio amenity area in this area right here that fronts onto Davis Drive. So the outdoor space and the design has been, will encourage access for residents and visitors to come into the building from Davis Drive. And we believe that the patios in this area will also contribute to the town's goal of elevating the Davis Drive streetscape. The next few slides are perspectives of the building as it relates to the context of the surrounding neighborhoods. So this is a perspective looking east on Davis Drive. This is a perspective looking south, and this is from Penn Avenue, and the property is currently vacant on the north side of Davis Drive. This is a perspective from Maple Leaf Public School, looking, so you can just see the top floors of the building in this area here. And this is a perspective from Queen Street, looking both north, and it's from, kind of like from the Haskett Park area on Queen Street, kind of looking up the hill, and we can see the building in this area here. With respect to accessibility, and we realize that some of the tenants could be seniors leaving here, there are lots of provisions for accessibility. I won't list them all, but they're listed on the slide. And with respect to sustainability, Greenham Rose are very committed to sustainability with respect to the town's standards and all of the items that we have listed here. So that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor. Dan Burholz would like to talk specifically about rental and why rental, and I think he'd like to say a few words.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. So I'd like to just address a few points with regards to the reason that we are trying to build rental, and we left the words "trying to" in parentheses because it is an ongoing process for us. So we recognize that a full mix and range of housing options, including rental options, is critical to creating communities and economic viability and vitality. Both, one of the main reasons that we have moved so swiftly over the last few, over the last number of months, we first originally came to Newmarket back in the, at the end of 2012, and we've had significant support from both the regional and town levels of And most recently, last fall, there were policies approved demonstrating their support for purpose-built rental housing. One of the things that we determined before when we first came up, when we looked at this piece of property, and originally evaluating it as a condo, we decided that it wouldn't be something that we'd be interested in. But when we looked at what was going on in York region and particularly in Newmarket, we realized that, you know, there was a huge dearth of rental supply in the area. In fact, from 1991 through till 2012, fewer than 400 rental apartments were built within all of York region. And in York region, there's been an average vacancy rate of 0.8%. A healthy rate in many U.S. cities is above 5%. A healthy rate, you know, we think of a healthy rate in this area in the neighborhood of between 2% and 3%. And even among new rental stock, which has effectively taken over for, you know, supplying the market with new supply, out of the 4,600 condo apartments in York region, only 32 were vacant when we originally did our study. So there is a need, and in particular in Newmarket, we found that the demand for rental was coming from young singles and couples, particularly seniors, and also middle-aged households and empty nesters. So that, we just wanted to touch on that relatively quickly because I know it's unusual in York region, even in the GTA in general, to build, to have the idea to build new rental. So we wanted to touch on why we're doing it. And the only, the only other thing I will add is that, you know, we came here with a couple of our consultants here to answer any questions. We have been very happy with the support from both the public and the politicians and staff, both at the town and regional level, and we look forward to answering any questions anybody may have tonight.
Great, thank you. Given that this is a public meeting, I'd like to have councils consent to hear from the public first, and then following the public comments, then maybe we could have the presenters come back and address some of those issues, and also clarify questions from members of council. I'm pretty okay with that approach. I know it's a departure from our existing process, but let's hear from the public first, okay? Okay? Okay, thank you. All right, so this is a public meeting, so is there anyone here that would like to have any questions of clarification, would like to express some concerns with respect to the proposal? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and address. Please sit down, this way. This is, this, and the microphone is on, and this is broadcast as well, so we'll get you on the record. Your name, sir?
It's Wayne Pilkey. I live on Forest Glen.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, for the size of the property, the footprint of the building looks relatively small. Is there any consideration to shortening the building and increasing the footprint and putting parking underground? Just seems 200 units of parking outside is, as far as building go, not an attractive feature far as people parking their vehicles in the wintertime.
Okay. We'll ask, we'll ask the proponents to respond to that question. Maybe if we have a few questions first, and then we'll, maybe you can deal with a group of them, okay, Brad? Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else that has a question? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hello, I'm Evelyn Starks, and I live at 9, well, that's the unit. I live at 2... I live at 270 Davis Drive, and I face west. I'm concerned with the height of the building. I'm gonna be, there's two buildings in front of me now, if I'm looking west. And I'm concerned that we really, I think the height of the building is too high. I don't think it should be any more, any higher than what we have now in Newmarket in that strip. And I'm also concerned that there's going to be building behind this unit, like, okay, the parking garage is gonna be high. How high is the parking garage gonna be? Is it gonna be 50 feet high, 100 feet high, or what's the height of it gonna be? And the noise level. Now, I'm two buildings over, plus the church, but I still am concerned about the noise factor, the height. And I'm also concerned that there may be building, maybe through road from Colgan, which is my parking, like, we park off Colgan. Our building is set back further than all the other buildings. And the other two buildings are further front. I'm concerned that this building's gonna go so far back that we're gonna end up having our view blocked and the noise level.
Okay, thank you very much. That'll be the second item. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Ian Hutchinson. I work, I live at 235 Queen Street. And what Evelyn just said, I have the same concerns, basically, only just from the other side of the equation with the parking garage and the height of the building. My understanding is, is that there is a height ruling right now as far as the town plan goes, am I correct? And I'm not quite sure what that is.
We can, we can have our planning staff deal with that.
Sure, yeah. There's that aspect. The other aspect, too, everything on top of what Evelyn said, was the traffic flow. We're looking at 225 new cars either going onto Davis Drive, and I'm sure it'll spill over to Queen Street, Parkside, all those areas around. I mean, right now, with the construction there on Davis Drive, Queen Street obviously has taken a lot of the overflow. And I don't think that's gonna go away once the construction's over. And the construction won't be over for, I believe it's a year and a half. So there's concerns that way as well, with the 225 cars being out in the road. The other part is, too, the, Brad had mentioned, the younger families that'll be moving into the building. My other concern is more from a town point of view, is where are they gonna go to school? There's a lot of schools that I understand are full. I know Maple Leaf is full, and GLR Bell's just a small little school there. So those are just some of the concerns that I have. And certainly, with the height of the building, it's right now towering over our backyards, and that'll also be a concern for us along Queen Street.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. So let's get to five, and then we'll have Brad address five issues. If, are there any other questions? Okay, well, maybe, Brad, we can, oh, there's a gentleman there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the submission that Mr. Rogers has put together. It's been very thorough. My name is Glenn Letman, I apologize. I live at 71 Forest Glen Road. I have about four or five points I just want to mention at this meeting. I recognize the secondary plan policies that have been prepared by the municipality that deals with intensification. I also recognize the provisions of the official plan, which has basically two height and density allowances on this particular property, with the higher allowances being permitted adjacent to Davis Drive, up to a minimum of three meters and a maximum, pardon me, three stories and a maximum of 10 stories, with the provision allowed for bonusing. I, too, am concerned that, I'm not sure that the provisions that are being granted through the bonusing of this particular application would warrant the full 15-story allowance. I say that not so much of concern to the corridor that's being intensified, but basically by the impacts of the adjacency of the stable residential neighborhood, which I'm, which I live in. There are other bonusing provisions in the official plan. There's a total of 13, I believe, that council may wish to consider if it is actually going to deal with increased height, which is under consideration. The owner's proposing to build a rental accommodation, which is certainly recognized as a need in York region, but he's doing it for his own purposes as well. And that has to be recognized, that there's a market for that, and that could be one of the considerations that council has to consider when dealing with bonusing. One of the other concerns that I have is with respect to the road interconnection. I recognize this is in your secondary plan currently, and it deals with a mixed, pardon me, I believe it's called a minor collector road, upgraded minor collector road, directly adjacent to the south of this property, which would run in an east-west fashion, right from Young Street all the way over to the, I believe it's Colgan Road where the apartments are. If you take a look at the conceptual layout of that road, you'll recognize that there's land, lands that will have to be purchased for that road. And in my quick analysis of this, without looking at it to any great degree, that would be a single-loaded road and would only really serve to deal with the overload of traffic on the recently upgraded regional transportation corridor of Davis Drive. I think consideration should be given to that road for a couple of reasons. One is it will definitely impact some of the natural hazard, natural floodlands and hazard lands. And I speak to the area directly north of where Forest Glen Road is. The conceptual layout of the road certainly is intended to be conceptual in nature, to show connectivity. But it's also a policy in the secondary plan that council is to consider the alignment and the suitability of those roads to ensure that there isn't other impacts for that connectivity. It also indicates in your secondary plan that where it impacts with, through the natural heritage system, it's the greater protection of the natural heritage that would prevail. So I just ask council to give consideration of that. Now, I know that that's not really a large part of this particular application, but certainly there's a component of that which is being identified as being reserved for future road connection. So in saying that, that road connection of 20 meters would really deal with, the road edge would be directly adjacent to the northerly properties on Queen Street, and the edge of the road would be directly adjacent to the face of the building, which would be the parking garage in this particular development. So that interface and the spatial separation in there would not seem to be particularly well-suited for a setback. There's also some grading of these lands that obviously flow from the north to the south, which would potentially increase the height of the platform of the building and lessen the, or to a lower area where the residences on Queen Street are. So the impact of that interface, again, I think is being compromised. So that would be one thing that should be considered, I believe. There's also a provision in the secondary plan that talks about, I think it's called a proposed private road lane concept, which also runs approximately midway through the property. Through the site plan that have been shown, I'm not sure how those are being integrated into this particular plan. So if one portion of the municipal road infrastructure is being proposed within the plan, I'm not quite sure how that would accommodate the private laneway connection. And that private laneway connection would be from...
Yeah, I have you at six minutes, so I need council's concurrence to understand that.
I'll be very short. How much time do I have? I'll be quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, I will be quick. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to take much of your time.
No, 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 if you feel you need more, council can consent to extending that to 10 minutes, that's all.
That private low, road laneway is intended to go from Deerfield and interconnect to the parkland, which is designated to the east. Now, I understand that council has also passed an amendment which would reconsider the dedication of that, or the designation, I'm sorry, of that public parkland where the, where the church is currently located to another form of urban use. And it's been identified in the plan and in Mr. Rogers' report, the importance of that parkland to the, to the functioning of this particular area. And it's also noted in your secondary plan that parkland is, I believe, at a significant shortfall. So if that was, if those lands were to be re-designated and used for something else, I believe it would, there would be a conflict in what's proposed in your official plan. The last point I'll make is with respect to the grading and topography, and I think that was mentioned, and I certainly mentioned it earlier, and I believe that certainly the building platform could potentially be lowered towards the south so as to create a, an interface that is a little more compatible in its, in its interface with the stable residential lands to the south. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to some of those questions.
Thank you.
You've raised a lot of points. Do you have notes that you could leave with the clerk? Do you have notes that you could leave with the clerk?
I don't, I only get to date what I will.
Would you mind? Because there's a lot, there's a lot to cover there, and we want to make sure that that's all addressed, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else? Oh, we're up to about four. Maybe we could have, we'll have this gentleman, and then we'll have Mr. Rogers and Mr. Berholtz provide information on some of those other items, and we'll have staff address those things as well. Yes, sir, your name?
Good evening, my name is Heinz Stickfeldt, and I live at 250 Davis Drive, Suite 905. I have been observing the traffic pattern on Davis Drive, exiting from 230 Davis Drive, which is a church, on Sundays. And I have come to the conclusion that the proposal of sharing the driveway of the church with this new building is, should not be approved. The reason for saying this is, on several occasions, I have noticed that people using the sidewalk, and especially people in wheelchairs, have been inconvenienced by cars blocking the sidewalk. Now, this is only a one-time occurrence on Sundays, and that only occurs between the hours of 12 o'clock and approximately 12:30. Now, a four-fold increase in cars, which is proposed by 115 parking spaces, will severely increase this. Also, I would like to point out that the future residents of this building will be poorly served because according to the information I have been gathering from Viva Next, there will be no permitted left turns across the rapidways. So anyone from this building wanting to go west, for example, will have to go to Main Street, where there will be a dedicated U-turn lane. The same applies to the residents of Vincent Street. These people will not be able to make left-hand turns going east onto their road. Therefore, I believe it's only fair to suggest that this bill, this proposal will be delayed until Deerfield Road can be extended so that the residents of this building may enter and exit onto Parkside Drive and then use the controlled intersection of Parkside Drive and Longford Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Berholtz, there are some items that you might be able to address, others may be addressed by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those were good comments that we heard from the public. I'm glad to, pleased to try to respond to some of those, and I'm sure that Marion might want to, or Rick might want to respond to a few of them as well, as they relate more to what the town is doing than what we're specifically doing. With respect to the, the height of the building, I would like to say that it is consistent with what's been approved in the town's secondary plan with, with bonusing. The, we have completed a noise study. Noise was an issue that was raised with planning staff on the pre-consultation meeting. We did complete a noise study, and that has been circulated with the experts at the town and the town's peer, peer review consultant. We have also, with respect to concerns about traffic and traffic flow, we have completed a traffic study. Kim Nystrom is here from Coal Engineering, and he can speak to the entrance, which was the last question that was talked about from Heinz. The school board was circulated with our application. We don't believe that there is an issue for the people that live here to go to school, but perhaps Marion could confirm that. As far as the, the interconnecting road at the south end of our property, that was a concern with, with us when we started this application. It was deemed as to be very important to staff and the town when they were doing their secondary plan. We have made provisions for that road, but that, I do want the public to know, that that doesn't mean that when this development is built, the road will be built. That road may take several years for the town to construct it. It's a town road, and it will require the cooperation of several developers along that road. So I just want to make that very clear. We've made provisions for it. We've worked with staff with respect to the elevation of our parking lot in relation to where that road will go. My understanding is the town has retained an engineering consultant to look at the design of that road. We've provided them with a lot of the information to assist with that, but we are not actually designing the road, we're not building the road. That's something that could be several years away, but we're providing a provision for it and a space for it, essentially. So I just want to make that very clear. With respect to the north-south connection, that gentleman from, I didn't get his name, I apologize, from 71 Forest Glen, the, we are not providing for a full-scale north-south connection, but there will be an opportunity for vehicles to, to connect. So our site plan will address that, and we are dealing with staff as it relates to site plan details, as far as grading and, and those, those types of issues. I would like to make a comment on the last gentleman, Heinz Stickfeldt, with respect to not allowing left-hand, left-turn lanes. That, that is consistent throughout the whole corridor, and that's the whole premise of, of the corridor, is to not allow people to turn in left. All of the access locations will be right-in, right-out on Davis Drive, and perhaps Young Street in the future, whenever that's done. So he is correct there, there will not be any left-hand turn lanes. And, and there will be lots of right-in, right-outs. We believe that the sharing of the driveway with the church property functions properly, it's been designed properly. But I will, I would like Kim Nystrom to make a comment on that, as he is the traffic consultant who's actually looked at that. I think it's a very important observation and comment that Heinz has made with respect to pedestrians and people when, when church is coming and going between the hours of 12 and 12:30, so that they can leave the site safely and get into the site safely. So that's, that's a good comment that, that we'll take very seriously. But I would like Kim Nystrom to... like Kim Nystrom to, to comment. I'm not sure if I've missed anything, Dan, as far as some of the comments that have been made. We do have notes on everything that has been made, and we're pleased to respond to that.
There was, there was one question, Brad, that talked about shortening the height and broadening the base.
Yes, actually, that, that was a very good comment. In order for this project to be feasible, we just couldn't afford underground parking. So, normally, on a building that has 15 stories of height, you would expect and you would see underground parking. Because the site is long and narrow, and because the feasibility of parking was just too expensive, the cost of an underground parking spot, I'm told, is somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000 per spot. So, what we have done, no different than the building to the east of us, is we have a parking structure. And that parking structure, it was a balance between GFA, gross floor area, height in the building, and whatever was permitted with respect to height, and parking. So, it took a long time for us to sort out that parking calculation. We believe this is the best layout for the building on the, on the property. A bigger, wider building, we believe, would impact the neighbors to the south more than what this building does. So, I think with that, Mr. Mayor, we're pleased to listen to more comments from the, from the public, but I would like Kim Nystrom more, if Dan wants to add some comments to what I was saying, to say a few words with respect to the entrance, because, as you know, the region would like us to, on all these development applications, to consolidate as many entrances as possible. They don't have an issue with, with this consolidated entrance, but I'd like to, Kim, to comment on it from a safety perspective.
Okay, we could do that?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Kim Nystrom. I'm with Coal Engineering. We're the transportation consultants for this project. And we have prepared a traffic impact study and parking review for this particular project. As we have heard, the, the access for this site will be a right-in, right-out access to be shared with the church next door. Our study focused on the AM peak hour and PM peak hour. Typically, that's what's required in a traffic study by both the town and the region transportation folks who review these studies. And our, our study indicates that the peak traffic volumes at this, at this location, at this access, will be between 70 and 75 vehicles over the hour in the AM and in the PM, in the peak direction. So, in the morning, that would be 70 vehicles exiting, making a right turn out on the Davis Drive. In the afternoon, that'll be 70 vehicles making a right turn into the access from Davis Drive in the PM peak. So, the peak direction, peak period traffic volumes are about 70 vehicles over the peak hour, so. Our assessment of the operation of that access results in a level of Service A, which is the best level of service on the scale of A to E, which represents capacity, and F, which represents failure. So, A is the, considered the best operational level of service, and that's what we're going to see here. With respect to sharing it with the church, the church has a peak use period on a Saturday, or Sunday, rather, we heard from, from one of our neighbors. And this building is not expected to have much traffic loading during that same period, so we don't foresee a conflict with the church traffic with respect to right-in, right-out, or any access on Davis Drive. People will be yielding the right-of-way to any pedestrians that may be crossing the driveway, so we don't think this is any less safe than any other driveway in particular on Davis Drive that's converted to a right-in, right-out might be. And in fact, it's probably less busy than some of the commercial driveways will be in the future.
Thank you. And your report will be peer-reviewed by, by staff, is that correct? So, so our own staff will have a look at the, at your report as well. Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, maybe now we can have, unless there's more questions from the audience, we can have some questions, clarification from our members of council. Okay? Maybe then if Mr. Berholtz and Mr. Rogers could come forward again, and we'll, we'll hear from members of council.
Right.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Berholtz? Now, there's questions, clarification from members of council.
Sure.
Counselor Sponga, is there any?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm the Ward Councilor for this area, and I'm, I'm going to premise that I'm optimistic about the prospect of seeing some purpose-built rental in, in our municipality, and especially within Ward 5. One of the biggest challenges we're facing are single, single, single-family residential neighborhoods or established neighborhood to the south is the proliferation of, of basement apartments. And although the town has a registered program, we don't quite have a handle on that. And we're finding that more and more people are resorting to turning their apartments into basements, and then we're facing, I, I know on a regular basis, I face issues surrounding parking, safety, and, and the interaction between the tenants and the single-family dwelling homes. Having said that, there's been some great points that have been raised from the public. And the first question that really jumps out, a couple of questions that jump up, jump to mind are, one of them, and I, and I heard it raised earlier, actually, it was a question, one of the lady, lady raised, I'm sorry, I don't recall your name, ma'am, but she wondered what would be the height of the parking structure. And I think a good comparison would be to compare it to the height of 250. So, I wonder if you could touch on that, and I've, I've got a number of questions. The other one is, I agree that there is some concern in the neighborhood in terms of what will be the impact to the single-family dwellings, the residential aspect in the south, especially to the homes that are immediately adjacent on Queen Street to the south. And although I, I know that you have prepared a shadow study, I'm, I'm not sure if, if the public has been able to see that. So, that's something that I would look forward in, in trying to get a better understanding. I understand that the impacts are minimal, but nevertheless, there are impacts on people's private property, and it'd be a good idea to get a clear understanding of what that is. The other one, I think there was some good points made around, there was a lot of, some discussion around this proposed future road in the back. And I think Brad has made a good point in saying that this is something that is proposed, but it may take many years and many partners to develop. And I would like to get, to hear a little bit more from either Marion or Rick, and what the process to actually get that land, to, to get the road put in, what the process is, and, you know, what we need to do in order to get that through. But in the, in the, in the interim, you briefly touched in your presentation, you showed that there was, you know, certain allocation of land that, for that road within your property, but you haven't really touched on the treatment that you're proposing for now. And I think that's very important, because, you know, between now and anywhere five to 10, 15, 20 years from now, a lot of that vegetation is going to grow. So, I wonder if you could perhaps touch, touch on those points. And of course, the more salient point is that right now, I know that a 500, 600 basement apartment in Ward 5 goes for about $900 a month, if not higher, $1,100. We're talking about one-bedroom apartment, in a basement apartment. And I'm just wondering if you could give us, if you have prepared that range of rents. You've given us some sizes, but I wonder, I know, and I know there is a, a large component that'd be related to affordable houses, some of those.
We're going to lose track of all the questions here.
Well, there's a lot of questions, so, I'm done.
Pause for a minute, and we'll let Brad respond here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sponga, I'll definitely leave that range of rents for, for Dan to answer, because that's not, that's not my issue. But I would like to comment on the height of the parking structure, and I apologize for not commenting on that before when, when the lady mentioned that. So, what, what, I think as, as, as those who have walked the site or know the site, essentially, from, from Davis Drive, the property goes up substantially, and then it, it slowly goes down to the residents to the south. And what our engineers have always been trying to, to, to do with the site is, is take some of the hill that needs to be cut and, and come up with a balance, a cut-fill balance, and determine the proper elevation, one for the building and the proper elevation for the parking structure. As far as the parking structure at the back, because I know that was the question, and there was a comment that it could be 50 or so feet high, we're, we're, we're looking at the, the, kind of the ground level of that structure to, to be into the ground a, a little bit. I'm not sure exactly how much, but the first floor of that parking structure is somewhere between three and four meters high. So, that, that is the actual height. It's not 50 feet, it's, it's 10 to 15 feet in height in total. And it's very similar to the parking structure, I believe, at 250, if I have my address correct, on Davis Drive, just to the east. So, it's very similar to that. As far as the dwellings to the, to the south on Parkside, we, one of the studies was a shadow study, and the shadow study is online, it's on the town's website, and, and I would ask the, the residents to have a look at it. If they have any concerns about the shadow study, we're, we're happy to talk to them about it, meet with them about it, or if they'd like to ask Marion about it, I'm sure that Marion could answer and help them with, with reading that shadow study as well. I think you are correct, Counselor Sponga, on the timing of that east-west connecting road. We're really not too sure. But as far as the treatment, and that, I believe, on our site plan, we, we allow somewhere between 17 and 20 meters of space for that road to eventually be constructed. There is a small swale, drainage swale that goes from, from the west and traverses, traverses across the property at the south end, and slowly makes its way down to Hasket Park. That swale will be treated. Actually, Dan, if you could point to it with the mouse, that's the best way for councilors and the public to see it. So, that swale that Dan's pointing to right now will be vegetated, it will be treated, and that entire area will be landscaped. When the town does construct that road, whenever it is constructed, I'm not sure what it will end up looking like when it's done. I can't comment on that. But I know that from our perspective, we wanted to make sure that it was well landscaped, both on the, on the east side, on the west side, and at the back of the property, because we knew that there would be a concern from the residents on Parkside, who would butt up to this property, and they've essentially had no use on that property for quite a number of years, so.
You mean Queen Street, right?
Queen Street, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd ask a clarification from either Marion or Marion in terms of how we're going to timelines.
Okay, with respect to the, the southern piece, go ahead. Ms. Plon?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sponga. The, the collector, this is referred to in the secondary plan as a minor collector, is an important component of the secondary plan, and it also is fulfilling the requirements of both the regional plan and the town's official plan, current parent official plan with respect to providing for a fine-grained grid. And the timing, it is, it is a little bit difficult. Our transportation consultants, when they did the comprehensive analysis, indicated that that road should be in and complete by 2031. Now, we'll have to obviously acquire, either through dedication, like we are in this case, or outright acquisition to, as, as time goes on, to secure the full 20 to 23 meters that's required for that road, and then construction and, and building of it. And that would be part of a capital project that would be coming back to, to council in the future.
Just a very brief follow-up, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
So, between now and 2031, we will have the opportunity to go to the public and show them how exactly this road is going to work.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that, that's correct. And we've currently retained Burnside to do a feasibility and preliminary design, so that this development will be graded appropriately to ensure that there's a proper connection between this property in, in its finished form and that proposed road, so that this will all sort of roll out in the longer term quite nicely.
Okay, and I think one question, Mr. Berholtz, with respect to the, the rental range.
Okay. So, in terms of the rents, what I would, what I'll start off with is, I, I did a market study relatively recently, over the last couple of weeks, just to see where the rents are, because we originally had done our work with our consultant back in the end of 2012. So, the current rents for the rental apartments, managed, purpose-built rental apartments in the same strip along Lauren Davis Drive, one bedrooms are 1225 right now. The one bedroom plus den are in the neighborhood of about 1525, and the two bedrooms are about 1625. And what we have tried to do, because we do believe there is a ceiling for rent, we do not believe that you can just keep raising rents, so we believe, we were, we are intending to come to market in the same general vicinity as the existing rents. Now, that being said, this is 2014, we won't be built to 2016, so there will be some natural increase. In fact, those, those prices have increased since 2012 slightly. But, you know, that is, we are trying to come, which is, which goes to what Brad said about the feasibility of some of the cost decisions we've had to make, such as not building underground parking, because we know that if we, we have to increase costs in, you know, to the tune of millions and millions of dollars to put parking underground, we knew that we could not maintain rents at the levels that are required to bring new market residents into this building in a reasonable manner.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Twitty?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Maybe you could just go over the reasoning why we're doing the shared driveways. Is it because of just the feasibility of the natural, because it's such a narrow piece of property, is that why? And also, regarding, like, you, you adjusted the parking lot for that drive, for that road allowance. Is the, is it expected that, that, that parking lot will be budding up to basically that road allowance quite close? Is there any, what's, what's the distance? Like, it's pretty well budding right up against it, is it? Or is there a little bit of, of wiggle room?
I'll, I'll try to, to answer both your questions, Counselor Twitty. With respect to the, the shared entrance, as, as I think we, we all know, there's, there's, there's a, an open channel creek that runs through there. And so, it was a concern of the Conservation Authority when Viva was designing the road on how to treat that creek and what to do with it. Our discussions with, with both Viva and our, and our neighbor was to keep the driveway the way that, because it's there and it's been designed around it, and there's a, there's a box culvert that goes underneath it right now, that, that, that works and it functions properly, and we've had that culvert assessed by our engineer. So, having said that, and Dan might, Dan has had lots of conversations with the church, but he might be able to reflect more on, on the actual driveway itself. But my understanding was, the region likes to limit driveway locations, and if a shared access works in the past, and it could work in the future, the region would encourage that. And so, we've, we've tried to maintain that. With respect to your question about the, the width of the landscape buffer or the future minor collector road, I think that's what Marion referred to it as, we've left a dimension, I believe, of 20 meters. And when we were first working on our site, we weren't sure at the time whether or not that road would be, we had heard as, as narrow as 15, or somewhere between 15 and 20, maybe 17.5. So, what we did is we provided for a 20-meter, we wanted to be safe, provided for a 20-meter road width there. I believe that the road that was approved in your secondary plan is 20 meters or less, but I'm, I'm not exactly sure on what Burnside's have been doing with respect to the preliminary design of that road. I know we supplied them with all of our survey information. I know we supplied them with all of our survey information, and we provided them with some cross-sections through there to assist them in providing responses to our grading plans so that, at the end of the day, when the road is built, our grading worked on-site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, Councilor DiMuccio?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, thank you very much. Brad, you've been excellent in being extremely forthright, and I appreciate that very much. I have a little bit of my own concerns, but one of the things that I wanted to ask you is you had, as, you know, and I know you're very limited because of the Viva bus lane, and there's really not much we can do for any of the proposals that are going to be coming towards this council when it comes to left-hand turn lanes. So you had said something about it'll be right in, right out, so they'll be able to access it, but I guess my question, I mean, let's face it, that, the reality is, it is going to be inconvenient. I'm not going to, you know, make any qualms about that, it will be inconvenient, and I'm just wondering, like, do, as a builder, like, as a developer, do you not take that into account when you're trying to rent these? I mean, if I was looking for a place to rent, that would be one of my, if I saw that, well, I have to, I'm forced to sort of go in in a certain way every time, that would really sort of put a lot of limits. So I'm just wondering what you're, how you are going to go about that with?
Good question, Councilor DiMuccio. For those of us that have lived in Newmarket for a long time, the function and the way that we drive on Davis Drive is evolving, and it has evolved over the past 30 or 40 years, and it will continue to evolve. This work that the region and Viva are doing right now, and I don't know if you've been to Highway 7 and seen the final product of what, of the result, but it will look beautiful when it's done, but it has been a very big inconvenience to a lot of the residences, a lot of the businesses, and a lot of the people in this town. But it will change the way that we think and the way that we drive the road, because of the encouragement of U-turns, which was never been encouraged in the past, and because of all of the driveways that are along our corridors that will become right in, right outs. Will that have an effect on the market and the renters in this building? I hope it doesn't, but it could, and I'm not sure if it will. But I know that when the road is finished, I think we all look forward to the completion of it. I know that it'll be a beautiful road, and I know that Davis Drive will flourish because of it. But we're in a time of a lot of pain right now and a lot of construction, and it's very frustrating for a lot of the residents in Newmarket.
Well, you know, I understand, I mean, my question was more towards the convenience, not the aesthetics of, you know, I think we all agree with that. Again, I'm just a little worried about the convenience factor, and I think, yes, a lot of things are changing, but it doesn't mean that they're changing for the convenience. And, you know, we certainly want to see a, I think, what most people are looking for, in fact, are convenience. And so that was just a side thing that I was just concerned about. The other thing, though, and I know that you can't answer this, Brad, but I would, I am interested in knowing, Councilor Sponga had asked about the proposed rental units, and I'm just wondering if you have any idea what we're looking at, cost-wise?
The rent charge?
The charges, yeah.
It's already addressed?
Did you say that already?
Yeah, it was already.
Did I miss that? Sorry, what was it again?
The general thought is to have it match, the, match or slightly exceed the existing conditions, which was about 1225. So our, the range-
Sorry, how much was that? I didn't hear you.
Right now, the market in that area is about 1225 for a one-bedroom.
1225.
And so what we're thinking is that in 2016, when we come to market, we expect that we will be higher than that, but we are doing everything we can to keep it within that zone. But of course, we can't, you know, we don't know where market's going to go between now and then, but we are, our goal is not to become, is not to go substantially above what market is today. So, you know, I would say as a range, you know, whether it's 1275 to 1325 for a one-bedroom, which is about $50 more than what it's currently in a 40-year-old building in the same area.
So we're looking at a one-bedroom in between the ranges of 1225 to 1325 a month? Is that correct, then, for these units approximately?
Yes.
And how much was the going rate, Councilor Sponga, did you say?
We're seeing a one-bedroom apartment, right now, one-bedroom, and with around 600 feet, it's advertised at 900.
Right. And the current, like, at the corner of Lorne and Davis, there's two buildings facing each other, they're about 40 years old, built in, I think, the late 70s, and they're charging 1225 for a one-bedroom right now.
Okay. And that, and you said, okay, and that's, how many square feet?
The range for one-bedroom, let me get that through. Well, the low end of our building is 500, and the high end of the larger two-bedrooms will be in the range of 900.
500 to 900.
The internal design of the building has not been finalized, but that is, it's a safe range to go by.
And there's no additional cost for parking or anything like that?
There will be an additional cost for parking, it hasn't been set yet. The current market, I'll check right now, the current market in the buildings is 40 for an outdoor parking spot, and this isn't our pricing, because we don't know ours yet, but it'd probably be similar, but on the buildings around the area, 40 for an outdoor parking spot and about 60 for an indoor parking spot, which we won't have.
Uh huh. Okay.
Thank you. Regional councillor.
Thanks very much for the presentation. Daniel, just if you could speak to two things, as mentioned about the convenience factor and wanting to, would that be a deterrent to being on the Viva-Davis Drive route? My understanding is that's one of the major reasons you're there with the stop, et cetera. If you could speak to your choosing to be there and why, and then the other part you could speak to, and it's just been touched on briefly, I think I heard it mentioned once, but this is part of a pilot project, but you are discussing and with the region about using the region's rent supplement program to provide affordable housing units in the building as well?
Yes, absolutely. And so, yeah, to follow along with Brad said, certainly the convenience of the right-in, right-out was a deterrent initially, but when we offset, when we offset that with what, the reason we came to Newmarket in the first place and looked at a property along Davis Drive was because of the bus rapid transit line that's being put in right now. So it was a, with looking on a cost-benefit perspective, the weighing the pros and cons of both those things, we felt that with the way that mobility is going, we believe that the offset of a right-in, right-out would be easily offset by having a Viva stop right out your, right out the front of the door, one stop away from Young, very close to the hospital, you know, very easy, you know, to get east and west and eventually north and south along the future Young Street line. So it was a critical component, you know, one of our mandates in our company is to find developments along, you know, intensified rapid transit ways, not necessarily in cities. You know, we're looking for, we're looking to the golden horseshoe areas like Newmarket outside of the city of Toronto, where they're, where transit's focused. So on, and on the pilot project, we've been working over the last year and a half with, about a year with the region and the town on the pilot project that Regional Councillor Taylor mentioned, and the vision for that is to provide up to 25% of our units into a rent subsidy program. There's some detail set out in our planning justification report explaining it in further detail, but effectively, we are in the midst of working and negotiating an agreement with them to provide affordable housing units as part of our overall, you know, not the entire building, but up to 25%.
Thanks. I just had a quick comment on this, and it's been some great feedback from the public on this development. I do want to emphasize, and I make no bones about it, I'm fairly passionate about it, that there's an incredible need for rental housing in the York region. We've had less than this many units built in the entire region of 1.1 million people in the last decade, and we have to, you know, try to build a complete community and housing for everyone. I met a young woman working at Tim Hortons recently, and she was taking the go-bus from Barry every day here to work. You know, so we have to think about our entire town and try to provide housing options for everybody, seniors who are trying to downsize, I know there's some in the audience today, I know there's some in the audience today that are looking to downsize and would like some rental options, and so I think we have to give that some thought. So when you're looking at rental, it's a different model than condominiums, and you need to look at things somewhat differently. And so it would be nice to have underground parking, the model doesn't really allow for that. So there are some, frankly, there's some small compromises that need to be made, but I'll tell you, when you're talking about maybe a couple extra stories in a building than would have originally been anticipated, to make it happen through the bonusing provision, for example, there's jurisdictions all over the place, including Vancouver and in Europe and even in different parts of Ontario, that are, they're providing far greater incentives in the tunes of millions and millions and millions of dollars to try to get some rental building, some rental units built for the community. So, you know, I think we have to also look at that and make sure that we're thinking about the young people in our community who don't want to necessarily have to leave the town to live in their first place outside of their house, seniors who need options for housing, wanting to downsize, et cetera. So I think we've got to try to provide housing for everybody in our community, or providing all kinds of other housing, we've got developments in terms of single-family housing units on all sides of town, but I think we have to think about this as well, and I'm, it certainly behooves us to at least investigate this and look further at it, so I'm glad we're, I'm glad we're taking some steps forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sponga?
Yeah, basically, Mr. Mayor, at appropriate time, I would like to hear what the next steps is from our planning department, but I thought I heard Brad said that in terms of some of the issues like the buffering at the back, the landscaping, the shadow study, that those reports are available, they could either get them through the town website through Marion or perhaps a call to Brad. What I would suggest is that, because of the timeline's been very, very short, and I know we've, probably a report will come back sometime in September or so, what I would suggest that if there's any concerns from more residents that would like to pass them on to me, and if we can't have them resolved at our staff level, I would hope that you're willing to maybe have a chat and see how we can address some of the concerns. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I just, I was just thinking in my head, as an aside, and this is actually more just a question to staff, do we have any stats on what the average, I mean, this is about affordable housing, and I'm just curious to know what, what would be the average cost for a Newmarket renter slash homeowner yearly or even monthly? What, like, do we have any stats on that? Because I'll be, I don't really know, like affordability could mean a lot of different things to a lot of different people, so I'm just trying to compromise in my head what is affordable versus what isn't, so I wanted to compare that. Do we have any? Yeah?
Ms. Plon?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Originally, the region had done some calculations, as you know, the region is the responsible for the affordable housing and the affordable housing benchmarking, and they originally had determined that 1,067 was considered the affordability benchmark for rental.
1,067 a year?
A month.
A month, okay.
A month, yes. 1,067.
Great.
Now, they're revisiting that because, you know, there's one bedrooms, there's one bedroom at Den, and there's two bedrooms, and so on, so they are revisiting that, and I don't have the latest figures, that I haven't memorized them and/or whether they've actually finalized that calculation, because they were revisiting that whole approach.
Okay, so that, sorry, you said 1,670, that's considered affordable, or?
Yeah, 1,067 per month-
Right.
-was back about six, seven months ago what they considered to be, to be affordable for a low-to-moderate-income household.
Okay.
And that would be for a one-bedroom.
And what, and I guess, so then, my question is, what is the, do we know what the average is for the average homeowner or renter? In, not low to moderate, but just the average? Do we have stats on that?
I don't have stats on that, no.
Well, I would be very interested to know that. I think, you know, and I'm only saying that in light of this suspension of rules that we're passing tonight, I'd like to, it would have been nice to know what, you know, the comparisons there. I just want to make sure that this is affordable, and, you know, I don't know what the, I could be entirely wrong, I'm not, I'm not an expert in this, you guys are, and so I don't know, but it would have been nice to know that.
One of the things that, maybe we could come back to, Daniel or Brad, is the number of units that are going to be made available to the region under the Affordable Housing Project. How many units out of the 225 units will be available?
The final number is up to the region, but we've put forth in our opening proposal to them to go for 56, which would be 25% of that, 225. Am I speaking well enough now? Sorry, the total number of units is 225, so 25% would be 56 units.
So 56 units then would be eligible for affordable housing support from the region?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's how, in part how you're addressing affordability?
Exactly.
Okay. And the rest is market rent, yeah, whatever the market dictates. Okay, thank you. Councillor Kirwan?
Just, Mr. Mayor, just a question to Regional Councillor John Taylor, because he's very knowledgeable in this field. John, how many people within New York region are on the waiting list for New York housing?
Regional councillor?
Yeah, there's, the waiting list is in excess of 10,000 people on the waiting list or families on the waiting list, it's very high. I just want to be clear that that's for fully subsidized-
Yes.
-not fully, but highly subsidized housing through New York region housing. Then there's the rent program, which is a rent supplement, which is a softer program, which would be applied here, and then there's market rent. And I will, indulge me, I will add, though, that because the waitlist is so high and because it's growing, no matter what we do, we realize that one of the ways that you can address affordability for the most people, and it doesn't mean fully affordable, it doesn't mean affordable for everyone, but is through rental housing, and there is a demand out there, and it does help when, one of the only options, it seems, to a lot of people in the community is to purchase otherwise, and so it's one of the sort of tools you have in your, in your bag of tools that you try to address a wide range of housing options and affordability options. It's, there's many different ways to go and approach that topic.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilor Sponga raised a good question, and for the benefit of the audience, thank you very much. I have a motion, please, to receive the presentation and the deputations and the correspondence. Councilor Sponga and Regional councillor, all those in favor. Thank you, that is carried. So it might be appropriate now then to outline the next steps, Mr. Naderi or Ms. Plon, in terms of the reasonable timelines and when this will be coming back to committee, to council, and what the options are for the residents as they want to follow through. Over to you.
Mr. Mayor, we've got the comments from tonight, which has been very comprehensive and very good, so thank you, public, for your comments. We can still receive comments in writing as well, and so that would be helpful if anyone has comments. Do put them in writing and send them on to the town. We-
What would the email address be?
They can send them directly to my email address, is probably the easiest. It's mplant, that's M-P-L-A-U-N-T at newmarket.ca. And we are working with Burnside to look at the integration of the proposed minor collector at the rear and the grading with respect to the subject land, so that analysis is still underway. And we're also working with the applicant to resolve any outstanding issues, and we have a meeting scheduled for early next week to start to, you know, identify and smooth out some of those issues that, many of which came up tonight. And so we're, I'm not going to promise September, but certainly that's something where we're aiming to address, but failing that, it would probably be either, because of the election, it's probably be later on for the zoning and potentially in December, if we don't hit the deadline for September, because September is the 22nd, and that's looming pretty quickly.
So the next steps are a report back to council?
Report back to committee of the whole.
And then that would be addressed at the committee of the whole, and then to council, and then following council's decisions, there's options for people to identify any concerns that remain, okay? And if anyone is interested in the project, please feel free to, I would ask that you leave your name and your address with the clerk if you've not already done so, so that you could receive a copy of the reports as they go forward, okay? All right. Therefore, I'll ask for a motion then to adjourn the committee of the whole, and we would go forward. Have we covered all of the outstanding items? Okay. And I'd like to reconvene again as council under a special council meeting to ratify the decisions related to item 21, I think, B. Motion then to adjourn? Councilor Sponga, Councilor Daniel, all those in favor? That is carried, thank you. Do we need a few minutes to change, or is this ready up? So we need a few minutes for the system to-